It is now 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Bergus.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Yeah.
Teague.
Here. So I want to welcome everyone in council chambers and anyone that is joining us virtually. The second item on our agenda is the State of the City Address. And so we have done this pre-recorded so that people can also see visuals as they hear the State of the City Address. Greetings to the residents of Iowa City. I am honored and privileged to have the opportunity to address the city council and our community as I deliver my fifth State of the City Address. As you can see, I'm delivering my address from a transit bus in honor of our fare-free Iowa City Transit. We'll talk more about that later, but first I want to offer my sincere thank you to my fellow city councilors and those who served alongside me during the past year, who have dedicated their time and service to this city to help get us to where we are now. It is truly an honor to serve among a group of public servants who are as dedicated, talented, and hardworking, and I am grateful for the opportunity you have provided me to serve as mayor of this great city for yet another term. Iowa City would not be the wonderful and unique place it is without the assistance of more than 630 employees who work diligently to provide the critical services our residents need to live quality lives in a vibrant and caring community. From our bus drivers to our water service crews, our street crews to our park staff, these amazing people work to ensure the quality delivery of their services for residents and visitors alike. I would also like to share my thanks and appreciation for the residents of this community. As your mayor, I have had the opportunity to interact with many of you firsthand, and I have watched and listened as you have shared your hopes, dreams, and concerns. And it is because of people like you that I continue to learn and grow, continuing to build a community of strength and kindness together. This year, as I give the annual State of the City Address, I will walk through the highlights that were made possible through our city's strategic plan and through the hard work of both council and staff who are poised to ensure that this great community is prepared for future challenges, provide opportunities and hope, and understands that partnership and collaboration can only make us stronger. Speaking of collaboration, we could not have taken on the many projects that we have, nor seen the completion of multiple important efforts without the strong support of local, state, and federal agencies, as well as our community partners. Our partnership with Greater Iowa City, Inc. provides us with opportunities to collaborate on projects that forward the vision of this region's first strategic plan, the all-in vision Better Together 2030, provides us with the support needed to realize a regional vision that aligns with our city's strategic plan and tackles large projects through an inclusive, multi-agency approach that brings together residents and leaders from the larger county. The South of Six Business District and Iowa City Downtown District are two valued partnerships that work to enhance our city through their advocacy, programming, and projects that provide cultural vibrancy, opportunities for connection, and support for business owners, residents, and visitors. Through a $4 million grant from the Environmental Protection Agency Region 7, the city will expand its existing compost facility, increase in processing capacity to aid in landfill diversion, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and allow even more residents to utilize our composting services. The city continues to partner with Shelter House and was able to increase winter shelter funding by $75,000 to strengthen and stabilize services and access to housing during the season's coldest days. In an exciting new partnership, $75,000 from our Affordable Housing Fund was allocated to the Housing Fellowship to purchase a vacant property at 724 Ronald Street and create affordable and energy-efficient housing in the Northside Neighborhood. This home is being constructed by students from the Iowa City Community School District through their student-built housing program and is supported by the Iowa City Home Builders' Association and Vocational Training Council. A second home on this same property is expected to be built under the same partnership in the coming year. We continue to support the efforts of the Johnson County Community Violence Intervention Program, which brings together community leaders, residents, and law enforcement to work together to prevent gun violence before it escalates through support and assistance to vulnerable community members. And we look forward to additional opportunities to partner and grow together to build upon a community that understands where it has been and knows where it is going. Another pillar of our strategic plan focuses on racial justice, social equity, and human rights. Iowa City has long been a community that embraces diversity and welcomes different perspectives, but we have much work ahead as we continue to build a safe and welcoming environment for all to enjoy. To this end, we rely heavily on our partners and on the work of the city's Equity and Human Rights Office. These staff are dedicated toward programming that uplifts, educates, and celebrates diversity and equity. In 2023, we supported the funding of an additional staff member for the Human Rights Office, who will serve as engagement specialists, helping to promote educational opportunities and events, as well as share important community resources aimed at strengthening the community's knowledge and awareness around issues related to social justice, racial equity, and human rights. The Human Rights Commission made recommendations and the city council awarded funding to eight applicants for the Racial Equity and Social Justice Grant. Funding for these awards range from $6,000 to $25,000, all focused on one of the six grant priorities: building community, criminal justice, education, employment, health, and housing. In 2024, the commission has received 29 applications for funding. With total funding available raised to $100,000 for the fiscal year, we are excited for the work ahead to see the fruits of these efforts. In 2023, our city was among 120 cities across the nation that achieved a perfect score of 100 points on the Municipal Equity Index. This marks our 12th consecutive year of earning the highest rating for LGBTQ+ inclusion. Our city government provides a wide variety of diverse and inclusive community programming. Our library is a key community resource prioritizing multicultural events and programming, as well as offering educational materials and classes aimed at making all feel supported, seen, and welcomed. Our Parks Department offers inclusive programming and scholarships for underserved community members, prioritizing important skills like youth swimming lessons. Our city parks offer inclusive and accessible play features to support a broad range of users. Our senior center is a vital hub for the area's older adults, aimed at enhancing the quality of life through wellness initiatives, social connection, community engagement, and lifelong learning for a diverse population. They have recently expanded hours of service to further their mission and offer programming at various locations throughout the county. Our Transit Department's Fare-Free Pilot Program ensures that financial barriers don't prevent teens from accessing safe and healthy recreational opportunities, and that all our residents can more easily access employment, childcare, healthcare, and other vital destinations throughout Iowa City. It is clear through these many examples that we are deeply committed to racial justice, social equity, and human rights, and we will continue to prioritize these efforts. Our leadership and staff know that climate action is a priority and are dedicated toward the actions that will help our city achieve net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. The city's climate action goals set a high bar and require targeted efforts to make meaningful change. These efforts include education, engaging programming, and public and community collaborations. This past November, Iowa City was recognized with a Gold Level Designation from the National Soul Smart Program for their work to encourage the growth of clean, affordable solar energy at the local level. In October 2023, the city's Public Works Facility added a solar array to their rooftop. This array is designed to meet all of the energy needs of the building, adding to the facility's list of recognitions for innovative and sustainability-focused design. The Iowa City Municipal Airport recently received notice of a $400,000 grant award from the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law for the installation of solar panels that will offset the electrical energy required to operate the runway, terminal, and facility lighting. Our community members are active participants in climate action goals through engaging programs and events. The Root for Trees Program celebrated its 1,000th tree planted by a local resident. The goal of the program is to expand Iowa City's tree canopy and diversify tree species throughout the community. The Climate Ambassador Training Program enlists city staff from across the city, recognizing that our success hinges on every employee in every department having a role to play in reaching climate action goals. This program offers cross-departmental collaboration to share project ideas, resources, and celebrate accomplishments. These collaborations have led to projects like the purchase of an ebook bike for the Iowa City Public Library. The SPOT, the Hot Campaign, was announced last July and called on community members to act as volunteer scientists by helping to collect temperature data. This project was a collaboration between Iowa City and Cedar Rapids and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. Information gathered will be used to help us better address the health impacts of extreme heat locally. Last year, 32 volunteers fanned out across Iowa City to collect over 80,000 data points to be used as part of this important research. Insulate Iowa City is a grant program that offers funding for income-eligible residents to increase the insulation in their homes. Besides lowering electric bills, this program also helps fight climate change, as buildings are the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Iowa City. Since its inception, the program has funded 88 households with $196,000 in insulation-related assistance. In 2023, the Climate Action Grant Awards were announced to 12 local businesses and nonprofits, including a youth mini-grant for peer-to-peer education. These grants have funded insulation improvements, high-efficiency appliances, installation of solar panels, establishment of community gardens, increasing composting capacity, and much, much more. In June of 2023, $23.2 million in funding was announced by the Federal Transit Administration to replace the city's aging transit facility and purchase four additional electric buses. Funding of this magnitude is a rare occurrence, and the city is beyond excited to begin work on this project that will include a zero-emissions transit operations maintenance facility and double our existing electric bus fleet. In August of 2023, Transit kicked off a two-year fare-free Iowa City Pilot Program aimed at improving access to safe, affordable, reliable, and sustainable transportation. This program has seen an average increase of 47% in ridership per month, including over 200,000 new passenger trips. How is that for a successful launch? In the past year, the city was able to hire a consultant to begin work on a study that will determine the feasibility of bus rapid transit service between Iowa City and North Liberty. This study follows up on the recently completed passenger rail studies on the Crandic Railroad between North Liberty and Iowa City. Working with the MPOJC through a $300,000 Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, the development of a safety action plan for the metro area will help to reduce and eliminate serious injuries and fatal collisions for all road users. The completion of this plan will make Iowa City eligible for future federal infrastructure grants to resolve identified issues. The MPOJC awarded Iowa City $7.3 million in Surface Transportation Block Grant funds for the replacement of the Burlington Street Bridge. Because multimodal transportation is valued in our community, several projects were rolled out to improve bicycle travel around the city. Benton Street bike lanes were added from Greenwood Drive to Mormon Track Boulevard. South Gate Avenue bike lanes were also added between South Gilbert Street and Kiakuck Street. Kiakuck Street underwent a four-to-three lane conversion between Highway 6 and Sandusky Drive. Buffer bike lanes on Market and Jefferson Street were added from Madison Street to Governor Street. This includes new bicycle turn boxes at Clinton Street. Rochester Avenue bike lanes were added from First Avenue to Montrose Avenue. Bike ways were added on Sandusky Drive, Taylor Drive, Burns Avenue, Wetherby Drive, Lakeside Drive, and Hollywood Boulevard. Pedestrian travel is another value priority in Iowa City, and providing safe connectivity has been high on the agenda. Several projects occurred in 2023 that made improvements to crossing to enhance safety for travelers, and I will highlight a few of these. The Highway 6 Trail from Heinz Road to Fair Meadows Boulevard was completed, continuing our multi-year effort to build safe, accessible pedestrian facilities along Highway 1 and 6. New wide sidewalks, a pedestrian refuge island, and pedestrian underpass at American Legion Road for students accessing Hoover Elementary will improve access and safety for all travelers. A pedestrian refuge island with marked school crosswalk on Rochester Avenue and the sidewalk from Ashwood Drive to Rita Lynn Court, connecting students to Regina Educational Center, were added as a part of the Rochester Avenue Project. A new marked crosswalk was installed on Muscatine Avenue at Seventh Avenue for students traveling to City High, Southeast Junior High, and Longfellow Elementary. New marked school crosswalks were added on North Dodge Street at Fairchild Street for students accessing Horace Mann Elementary. Installation of the N Street Yield to Pedestrian Signs on South Sycamore Street for students traveling to Grant Wood Elementary was completed. A new sidewalk on the west side of Riverside Drive under the Iowa Interstate Railroad Bridge, connecting new development on Riverside Drive and Benton Street to the University of Iowa. In 2023, Rochester Avenue underwent major improvements, including utilities work and the addition of bike lanes. This busy street temporarily reopened for the winter, allowing travelers to enjoy the many updates. The work will be substantially completed in 2024. Other large projects include the completion of American Legion Road and improvements to Benton Street. Looking ahead to the coming year, we are excited to move forward with the downtown Dubuque Street reconstruction between Iowa Avenue and Washington Street, which will improve public and private utilities, replace sidewalks and curb ramps, as well as update streetscape features like planters, bike racks, and wayfinding. Also coming up this year is the replacement of the Gilbert Street Bridge and the completion of work at Sturgis Ferry Park. Our community is active and involved, and we look for opportunities to facilitate multimodal commutes for our residents. Whether you walk, bike, or bus, we will be looking at ways to prioritize these options. Our future looks bright as we move into future planning projects. Iowa City continues to be a community people are drawn to for higher education, top-quality medical care, arts and culture, Big Ten sports, entrepreneurial opportunities, raising a family, and retirement. In 2023, some of our notable accolades included being named once again as one of the best college towns in the Midwest, a top 20 best mall town to retire, a top 100 place to live in the U.S., and the small business community of the year. We are known for our accomplished literary history and celebrate our UNESCO City of Literature Designation each day through our programming, partnerships, and public art projects. What is not to love about a community that offers so much to so many? While we know these are all-important hallmarks of a great community, we also know that continued support for an inclusive economic plan is imperative to a healthy and welcoming community, and supporting access to skills, space, and funding are key priorities. In 2023, some of our programming highlights include the implementation of $4 million in ARBRE grants to support the underestimated business ecosystem. As a result of these projects, underestimated business owners and entrepreneurs will have more equitable access to success and potential through access to low-barrier capital, right-sized commercial incubation space, technical assistance programs, and entrepreneurial skill-building opportunities. Continued partnerships and support for the city's two business districts, South of Six and the Downtown District, including two planned quarter-million-dollar grants to activate placemaking in the district and an enhanced cleaning initiative in partnership with the Iowa City Downtown District. A renewed level of engagement with Greater Iowa City, Inc. and partnerships to connect and educate local business and development communities. Last year, we saw a huge resurgence in building permit activity, which translates to taxable growth and the ability to continue to fund critical services for our community. In 2023, building permit value reached the highest level since 2016, nearly doubling what it was a year prior. Looking ahead, continuing engagement with developers and builders, and exploring new ways to offer flexible incentives for smart, sustainable growth will be prioritized. Our community is strong, and our leaders are listening to what our residents have to say, taking action that will prepare Iowa City for continued and sustainable growth that considers the needs of all who call this place home. Safety and well-being are another pillar of our city's strategic plan, and we are dedicated towards ensuring that our residents, including those who are the most vulnerable, have access to resources, programs, and support. Because access to quality drink and water is vital to all, the city's Water Division has created a lead reduction program as the federal government announced new laws to protect Americans from the impacts of lead found in water pipes. These changes in regulation are important but can be financially burdensome. To address the issue, the city implemented the lead reduction program to help the community understand the associated risk, provide intestine in Iowa City homes, encourage insurance protection, and provide a cost-share program to help offset the related expenses for impacted homeowners. The city is committed to continuing to innovate, develop, and adapt programs in response to legislative changes. This past summer, our firefighters and police officers, in conjunction with other area public safety entities, put on the emergency services youth camps for junior high and high school students. Demand was strong for these hands-on camps, which gave participants an up-close look at the skills our first responders use every day to keep us safe. This program not only helps to build strong relationships, but also prepares students who may want to consider future public safety careers. By the end of 2023, a new policy required that all single-family and duplex rentals within Iowa City were to be tested for and mitigate radon in order to receive or renew a rental permit. This policy impacted 3,800 homes. Affordable housing funds were used to provide $68,000 in radon-related services at 88 affordable rental units owned by the Housing Fellowship. I think we can all appreciate our amazing local social service agencies, who together with our award-winning healthcare facilities, provide unequaled services to residents of all ages and needs. These services are critical to the health and vibrance of a community, and we are proud of the amenities we have available here. Our police and fire departments collaborate with our local service agencies to set a high bar when it comes to providing support for our diverse community and all who travel here to enjoy the activities and services we have to offer. In 2023, Johnson County was named just the fourth heart-safe community in the nation, making our community one of the safest places to experience a cardiac event. This designation came about in no small part to the collaboration between the Iowa City Fire Department and the Johnson County Amelin Service. Our fire department co-hosted CPR training events, identifying areas throughout Iowa City that would be best served by new outdoor AEDs, and helped to promote the Pulse Point app, which alerts users to a nearby cardiac event. I am also proud to share our fire department has demonstrated its continued commitment to providing the highest quality of service, as evidenced by receiving accredited agency status with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. ICFD first achieved accreditation in 2008 and has been accredited every five years since then, making it one of only a handful of agencies worldwide to achieve and maintain accredited status for more than 15 years. This past summer, our animal service staff was involved with the rescue of 131 dogs suffering in a puppy meal operation. Animal services staff worked tirelessly over the course of many days to provide food, shelter, and medical care to these vulnerable animals. Through their efforts, these dogs were able to be placed in loving and nurturing homes. Our police department continues its commitment to providing our community with the best care possible in every situation. In the past year, the department doubled its mental crisis coverage by adding a second mental health liaison employed by community but embedded in the police department. In the near future, ICPD will further evolve the mental health response approach by permanently assigning officers to the liaisons in a co-response model that prioritizes mental health needs and assists during times of crisis. We also believe that housing is a human right for everyone. To that end, we continue to work towards improved access to affordable housing by supporting many programs, updating policies, and changing ordinances to align with these priorities. Our neighborhoods are important, and the role of our Neighborhood Outreach Program is to build connections and opportunities to engage with one another through our neighborhood associations. There are approximately 22 neighborhood associations in Iowa City, and we continue to work with residents to understand their unique needs and challenges. Much of this work is done through the Program for Improving Neighborhoods Grant, which prioritizes neighborhood projects based on their alignment with the city's strategic plan for fostering healthy neighborhoods. We are committed to affordable housing and are taking important steps towards creating opportunities and providing support through the Neighborhood and Development Services Department and our partners. In 2023, the city provided over $10 million in rental assistance to local landlords through the Housing Choice Voucher Program. We created 50 additional affordable housing units using federal CDBG home funds. We paid over $1 million in relocation assistance to 80 residents of Forest View Mobile Home Park. We provided over $5 million in affordable housing serving over 3,000 renters and homeowners. Our aid-to-agency funding was increased substantially, serving over 30,000 residents. We provided $700,000 in affordable housing funds to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County for the construction of next senior apartments that will provide 36 affordable housing units, support rental acquisition for inside-out reentries program to house people leaving incarceration, funding for shelter houses HVAC enhancements at their emergency shelter, and support for the construction of DVIP's new shelter. emergency shelter, and support for the construction of DVIP's new shelter for victims of domestic violence. ARBRA funding has provided the opportunity to support our local partners through many programs. Some of these programs include $2 million for the expansion of daycare and other services at neighborhood centers of Johnson County, $1 million for facility improvements at the free medical clinic, which will support the addition of staff and service, almost $1 million to Community Crisis Services and Food Bank for mobile crisis outreach expansion, $750,000 for childcare wage enhancement through a partnership with Johnson County and the Community Foundation, over $1 million for a housing stability pilot program with shelter house for homelessness prevention, and $435,000 for the Quality Pre-Aprenticeship Program with UI Labor Center. Our housing authority owns and manages 86 public housing units, as well as 16 additional affordable units, which are scattered across the city. They also work with over 400 property owners and landlords administering 1,266 Housing Choice vouchers to eligible families. Their Family Self-Sufficiency Program has 160 active participants, making it one of the largest FSS programs in the nation. The goal of this program is to help participants build their savings accounts by working with the FSS coordinator to reach their personal goals. Last year, they also assisted over 1,500 eligible families in acquiring and maintaining safe, affordable housing and administered nearly 1,600 Housing Choice vouchers to those most in need. We continue to prioritize stable housing and options for our residents. In the past year, you have seen code amendment changes to provide affordable housing opportunities in the form of accessory dwelling units or ADUs in our community's residential areas. These changes, as well as those aimed at updates to our comprehensive plan, will provide these needed improvements and will pave the way for smart and sustainable growth in our community. Tonight is important to note that the projects and programs listed in this speech would not be possible without the dedicated work of our city staff. As leaders, it is council's job to understand the need and priorities of the public, but it is the role of our city employees to make sure that not only are we able to achieve these goals, but that we are able to maintain the high quality of services that the public expects and deserves. People are this community's most valuable resource, and I am proud of the work that our professionals do each day, providing critical services to keep our community not only safe and well-maintained, but also vibrant and welcoming. From the moment you turn on your tap water in the morning to the ways you travel around the community, there is not an area that isn't impacted by city services. Our street crews keep our road network moving throughout the year, redoubling their efforts during major storms like the one we experienced in January. Water, wastewater, recycling, and solid waste are all served so seamlessly that we can't imagine life without them. We enjoy a bounty of beautiful parks and a variety of recreational opportunities that enhance our community's health and vibrance. Those are a few of the services that you may notice around the city, but I also wanted to call out a few other busy offices that help our city run smoothly. The City Attorney's Office, Communications, Human Resources, Finance, Public Works Equipment Division, and the City Clerk's Office all provide supportive and critical functions that have a major impact on the operation and success of our outstanding municipal government. As I look ahead to the next year, I am proud and I am energized by what the future holds for a great community that seeks to become even better. This community is strong and growing, and I look forward to the opportunity to continuing to serve and guide our path forward in our efforts to impact the community through partnerships that share mutual goals. In unity, your Mayor Bruce Teague.
It was an honor to give the state of the city this year because, as you can tell, there's been a lot going on. And again, thanks to all of the staff, thanks to my, all of my coworkers up here. It's been wonderful, but I really want to say thanks to the residents because it is you that allowed us to do what we're doing up here, and it's for you that we provide these services. So thanks to you, and of course, our social services network. We really rely on you, and we're going to continue to do our best in this year ahead. So thanks to all. Now we're at item number three, which is proclamations, and 3A is International Women's Day and Women's History Month, and this is going to be read by our own Mayor Protem.
Whereas, okay, yeah, that's true. Whereas International Women's Day is observed around the world on March 8th to celebrate the achievement of women and Women's History Months in March, recognize the contribution of women in the United States. And whereas the theme of the International Women's Days 2024 is invest in women accelerated progress. And the theme for Women's History Months is inspire and inclusion. And whereas in 2024, International Women's Day and Women's History Months came at the midpoint of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, which set target for gender equality and inclusion, as well as eradications of poverty and hunger, good health, education for all, climate actions, and other priority by 2030. And whereas the Sustainable Development Goals, number three, good health and well-being aim to reduce by one-third barriers mortality, premature mortality for non-communicable disease through preventions and treatment and promote mental health and well-being. And whereas women's leader and women-led organizations are working in our community and around the world to promote good health and well-being. And whereas when women make up the critical mass of between 25 and 135% of the people in the community, forestry, their impact and felt forest conditions and regeneration's improvement improve. And the women themselves gain greater political voice. And whereas International Women's Day will be celebrated locally at the night of the 1,000 Dinner, Saturday, March 7, and will honor five women-led organizations that achieving good health and well-being. For sees of Johnson County, the Global Kids School-based Clinics, the Emma Goldman Clinic, the Youth Crisis Stabilization Program, and the UN Children's Fund, UNICEF. Now therefore, I'm Zaher Saleh, the Mayor Protem, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim in March 8th as International Women's Day and the month of March 2024 to be recognized as Women's History Months in Iowa City, and urge residents to commemorate and celebrate the achievement of women in changing the world. And here to accept, I think, Bijou Maliau. Johnson County United Nations Association.
Great.
Hello and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Bijou Maliau, and I am aboard, I'm on the Board of Director for the Johnson County United Nations Association. Night of 1,000 Dinner has been a Johnson County community event for over 20 years. Every March, we celebrate the socioeconomic, cultural, and political achievement of women as part of Women's History Month and International Women's Day. In recent years, the event has focused on the UN Sustainable Development Goal, with this year's theme centering on goal number three, good health and well-being. We also use this time to advocate and advance gender parity. In this vein, we invite the Iowa City community to join us on Thursday, March 7, as Mayor Protem Saleh said, between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, where we will honor five local women who lead community organizations. In closing, we will ask that you explore the history of women rights, acknowledge the ongoing challenges women faces today and around the world, and most importantly, we urge everyone to take meaningful action. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for all you do. 3B is Rare Disease Day, and this is going to be read by Counselor Dunn.
Thank you. Whereas there are approximately 7,000 rare diseases and conditions, each affecting fewer than 200,000 Americans in the United States, according to the National Institutes of Health, NIH. While each of these diseases may affect small numbers of people, rare diseases as a group affect an estimated 25 to 30 million American lives. And whereas, a national statistics indicate that approximately 1 in 10 people in Iowa or 300,000 Iowans are living with a rare disease. And whereas, many rare diseases are serious and debilitating conditions that have significant impact on the lives of those affected, and cystinosis is one of those 7,000 diseases. Cystinosis affects between 2,000 and 3,000 people around the globe as it damages cells, causing them to crystallize and die. And whereas, while more than 620 drugs and biologics have been approved for treatment of over 1,000 rare diseases, according to the Food and Drug Administration, over 90% of rare diseases do not have an FDA-approved treatment. And whereas, individuals and families affected by rare disease often experience problems such as delays in obtaining an accurate diagnosis, difficulty finding a healthcare provider with expertise in their condition, and a lack of access to treatment or ancillary services. And whereas, it is imperative that Congress pass the Stat: Speeding Therapy Access Today Act, a bipartisan bill that was created with input of the rare disease community, aimed at improving the development of and access to therapies for the rare disease community. And whereas, the National Organization for Rare Disorders, NORD, and the Iowa-based Next Generation of Cystinosis are organizing a nationwide observation or observance of Rare Disease Day 2024. Now therefore, I, Counselor Andrew Dunn, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim February 29th as Rare Disease Day in Iowa City, Iowa. And accepting this is Micah Covington, President of the Next Generation of Cystinosis.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Micah Jane Covington. I am the co-founder of Next Generation of Cystinosis. However, we had new board elections. I'm now vice president. So, and so let me get started here. The zebra is the mascot of rare disease patients worldwide because in medicine, zebras stand for uncommon answers. And as said, I show my stripes for cystinosis. The rare disease that I live with, as we talked about, it causes cells to crystallize and die, so it affects my entire body. And right now, I am now in kidney failure again and need a new kidney. It also attacks my vocal cords, and so I sound a bit different than I used to. So like we said globally, Rare Disease Day is marked on the last day of February, as they say, the rarest day of the year this year, the 29th. And so my organization, as a member of NORD, the National Organization of Rare Disorders, we work to assist in educating the public on rare diseases such as my cystinosis and cater to the needs of adults, the emerging population with this disease. And so to commemorate Rare Disease Day, my organization is holding a rally here at the City Hall on Thursday, February 29th at 2:00 PM. All of you are welcome to join, and so is the public. And yes, we all, cystinosis and rare disease people, patients, we have such rare journeys and struggles. We need extra help from the government. We need the STAT Act passed because one of the things that will do is create a rare disease advisory board in the FDA to help push our medicines to get covered and approved by the FDA. So please rate our congressperson, tell them, tell her, we need her to support this. It's not a partisan issue. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, and it's great to see you. Yes. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda, which is items four through nine. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Move. Second.
Will by Sala and second by Alter. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out item 8F, the sale of 1313 Sandusky Drive, is another one of our home affordable housing initiatives coming to fruition with the rehabilitation of a duplex. And now we are looking at now helping people move into permanent housing. And so I think that's just, especially on the heels of your presentation, talking about affordable housing efforts, I think that's just worth noting.
Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sella.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We are at item number 10, which is our community comment. This is an opportunity for anyone that would like to speak on a topic that is not on our regular agenda, you can come up at this time. And if you're online, please raise your virtual hand, and I'll acknowledge you. Seeing no one in person or online, we, and actually, we'll move on to item number 11, which is our regular formal agenda. 11A is an Appeal of Historic Preservation Commission Decision, appealed to the City Council of the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission approving a certificate of appropriateness with conditions of an alteration project regarding the installation of a mini-split HVAC system at 811 East College Street in the College Green Historic District. And I'm going to ask for comments from our city attorney first, Eric Gores, to kind of give us a summary.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have a lot of HPC appeals to the council, and also for the benefit of the public, who may not have had a chance to read my public memo on this subject, I thought it would summarize that memo on the procedures for this kind of an appeal. First, there are two things for this council to decide. First is whether the commission has exercised its powers and followed the guidelines established according to city code. Second, whether the commission's action was patently arbitrary and capricious. Now, the arbitrary and capricious standard is a little amorphous to many, perhaps not to Counselor Burgess, who is a lawyer, who I'm sure deals with that with some frequency. So I'll offer the definition offered by our Iowa Supreme Court. Agency action is considered arbitrary or capricious when the decision was made without regard to the law or facts. Agency action is unreasonable if the agency acted in the face of evidence as to which there is no room for difference of opinion among reasonable minds, or not based on substantial evidence, close quote. So as that language suggests, this is a narrow review, unlike a de novo review, which is kind of redoing the whole appeal process or immediately placing yourself in the shoes of the Historic Preservation Commission. Counsel is not entitled to substitute its judgment for that of the commission. In other words, you may not reverse the commission's decision merely because you disagree with it or would have decided it differently. Rather, if you find that the commission exercises powers and followed the guidelines established by law, and that its decision was not patently arbitrary and capricious, then you must affirm the commission's decision. However, if you find that the commission did not exercise its powers and follow the guidelines established by law, or did act arbitrarily or capriciously, you may, consistent with the Historic Preservation Commission regulations, reverse or modify wholly or in part the decision of the commission to impose conditions contained in the certificate of appropriate. you may, consistent with the Historic Preservation Commission regulations, reverse or modify wholly or in part the decision of the commission to impose conditions contained in the certificate of appropriateness. Again, this is true only if you find that the commission failed to follow the guidelines or acted arbitrarily or capriciously. Again, procedurally, this is a situation in which the certificate of appropriateness was granted to the property owner with conditions. It is those conditions that I believe the property owner is complaining. With that, I think unless the council has any questions, I think we'd probably be ready for Ms. Sitzman.
I do have one question, just kind of restating those two points you made. If I were to restate that first point as did the commission act within the bounds of its, or did the commission overstep or not overstep the boundaries of its powers? Would that be a fair way to understand that first point?
Yes, if they were to say, you know, and the house has to be painted purple. Well, hold on, there's no standard that says it's got to be purple, you know, or something like that. Yes. Or if they cited to a set of regulations or something that aren't applicable, that don't, you know, apply to this building, something like that.
So if I were to further simplify it, we're really asked if we, do we think they overstepped their boundaries? Or do we think they just behaved without any consideration of what those boundaries would have been?
Right. The arbitrary and capricious standard is really kind of designed to make sure that people aren't just making decisions out of bias or prejudice or, you know, because the property owner broke up with my daughter kind of thing. You know, we need to keep it based on the facts, based on the standards, based on the law. And even if reasonable minds may disagree, even if you, you might have decided this differently, but, you know, it's not completely out of left field, the decision the commission made, then you would have to affirm.
Thank you.
I have one clarification question. So we did receive a late handout from Shaiav Hattery. And in the summary, it says, and I'll just read it because I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, only briefly. Only briefly, sorry.
Okay. But it said, "The HVAC system that were installed were done so the manufacturer's installation instruction and widely accepted best practices. The method in which they were installed ensures easy maintenance by contractors, reduces the risk of mold formation in the building, and meets manufacturer's constraints on refrigerant piping." So we just received this. And my question is, when we go talk about the arbitrary or capricious, and you say without, you know, as states, without regard of facts or not based on substantial evidence, this to me is evidence or a part of something that they didn't have when they made this decision? So my question would be, before we go down and have a large conversation, is it possible that the commission, that this can be reviewed by them before we even have a conversation about this? This to me is substantially different, coming from, you know, Shaiav Hattery, who, you know, looked at this and gave an opinion, or...
Right. Well, again, I only reviewed the Shaiav Hattery letter briefly, but I understood them to say that the system was properly installed, which is an entirely, answers a different question. That's not, and thus it's compliant with the historic preservation standards. I took their answer just to be, it was properly installed, and it's a good system, and it'll have all kinds of advantages, none of which is in dispute.
Okay, so I guess the other question would be, because of this, is there an opportunity? Because this didn't come up in anything that I saw. What would be the procedure if someone wanted to seek like a special exception, given, you know, what Shaiav Hattery has said? Because I understand there were some complexities to this property. I guess I wanted to get a little information before we dive into this deep to see if there's opportunity that, you know, they didn't have, you know, substantial evidence or information that was lacking at the time when they made their decision.
Right. I think my short answer would have been that the property owners had every opportunity to present that information to the Historic Preservation Commission, but chose not to. Now, maybe they had, maybe they had their own reasons for that. I don't know. But certainly, they had that opportunity. Could you send it back to HPC to consider it further? That would be a complicated process. And I'll maybe ask Ms. Sitzman, who I know is going to speak in a moment, to speak to that. But normally administratively, you don't kind of give two bites at the apple for folks. That is, if they have the opportunity, you know, the due process opportunity to present their case and choose not to, that's fine, that's their choice. But then, you know, typically, you don't go and amend the record after the fact, you know, especially on a kind of appeal like this where it's an arbitrary and capricious standard, not a, you know, a new trial de novo or something like that.
I have a question, too. I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
Sure.
You said that, you're telling us at the council, if we felt like the Historic Preservations, they follow the guidelines that they have when they make a decision about this correctly, and they come with this decision not based on any buyer or anything, just like they follow what they have, the rule, regulation, whatever you call it, and they come with this decision. And now, we cannot disagree with them. That's what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying quite that. I'm saying that if you find that they did not act arbitrarily and capriciously, and again, I can go through that definition again if you'd like. Because, you know, you can imagine a hypothetical situation in which, I'd like to think this would never happen in Iowa City Board of Commission, but, you know, that the commission was motivated by something improper and that they weren't making a decision based on the facts and law before them. You know, there's a reason this appeal comes to you. Obviously, there's that possibility, and that's what you're there to decide whether that appeal, or I'm sorry, that decision was made in arbitrary or capricious fashion or they adhered to entirely wrong set of standards, something like that.
Now, also the question.
Yeah.
Yes, they did not do anything wrong. Let's just say that. We assume, okay, we figured out, they follow everything, nothing wrong.
Right.
We cannot still disagree with them.
Well, I'd be loath to tell this council what to do. I can only lay out the standard. I would say that if you conclude that they exercised their powers appropriately and followed the right standards and did not act in an arbitrary or capricious fashion, then you should affirm their decision.
Yeah. Yeah, because I believe sometime as a council, it's not about the law in the book. It's about our value as a council and what we see on this situation, even though I don't know where it is going to go. But in general, sometime a developer will kick the box, but we will see that, oh, we think as a council, we need extra things. I don't know. We will, yes, I was trying to make sure this is not like, we break up law if we did not, like, went with their decision.
Would you break the law? No. I don't think you would be breaking the law. But certainly, you would want to articulate where you believe the commission either went astray, it didn't follow the right standards, or where, what decisions they made that you felt were arbitrary and capricious.
Sure. Thank you. You make it very clear. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll bring up Danielle. Yes, welcome.
Mayor, let me pull up my presentation here. Mayor, could you open the public hearing?
Yes. I'm going to open up the public hearing.
Okay. I'm Danielle Sitzman, Director of Development Services. Sorry, not, yes, Division Head. Sorry, trying to read and speak at the same time. I'm also joined this evening with Jessica Bristow, who is our Historic Preservation Planner. And what I'll be doing here is presenting the, basically, an overview of the memo that was in your packet, going through the timeline of this particular case before it came to you for appeal, and hopefully answering most of the questions as we go through here. The subject property is an apartment building containing tent dwelling units located at 811 East College Street. I have a couple images here. One is from the county's property information viewer and some photos taken by staff over the years. This was as far back as 2008. The property is owned by 811 to 819 East College Street Residential Cooperative. It's shown here as a clip of our zoning map, where you can see the diagonal pattern overlaid on top of it indicating that it's in a historic district with a historic district overlay zone on it. The property is located in the College Green Historic District and is classified as a key property within the district. The Iowa, City of Iowa City has eight local historic districts and five conservation districts, and numerous local landmarks shown on the left side of this slide in the various colors. These properties were all designated as local historic resources by the city council over the years through a rezoning process, since that's the overlay district that gets assigned to designate something as being in a district. When that designation is applied, it does require that material changes requiring a regulated permit, that meaning a permit that the city's code requires to be issued, like a building permit, a mechanical permit, a use of the right-of-way permit, go through a historic review process. So once something's designated as in a historic or conservation district, it has extra rules that apply to material changes that occur on the property. The city does require permits for all new construction and most existing building repairs and remodeling projects. That's true of any property in the city, not just those in historic districts. And per our zoning code, a material change is any act that adds new materials or otherwise modifies an exterior feature of a property. Material changes include alterations to the exterior features of a building or structure, demolition of a building or structure, demolition of a portion of a building or structure, and any new construction on a property, including construction of any new streets or driveway accesses. Examples of material changes include modifications to windows, siding, or porches, doors, roofs, and, as I said, even curb cuts. According to the city's municipal code, applications for historic review in a historic district will be reviewed for compliance with the adopted ordinances of the city or the adopted guidelines by reference. Those are established in the zoning code. And there are also three levels of review spelled out in the zoning code itself for the process of how a historic review will be conducted. And there's three levels of historic review, minor, intermediate, and major. And when a material change is proposed, the amount of the change is evaluated, and the corresponding historic review process is followed. Minor changes that demonstrate compliance with the historic preservation guidelines are often reviewed and approved solely by staff administratively or via an intermediate review by the staff and the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Changes that are more significant to the exterior do require major reviews, and those are the ones that go to the Historic Preservation Commission. Appeals to major reviews in historic districts are heard by city council. And all reviews follow, like I said, the guidelines and standards adopted by reference by the city. So this is a map of just the College Green Historic District close up showing the property highlighted in yellow. This district was established in 1997, like I said, through zoning process. The current property owners purchased the property in December of 2012. And since approximately 2003, our department has mailed out annual reminders to all property owners within local historic districts, letting them know that exterior modifications require historic review. The current owners were therefore have received essentially nine annual notices of the process and requirements. In July of 2022, urban planning staff received three separate citizen complaints regarding the appearance of external piping at the subject property. Unlike the rental housing inspection program in Neighborhood Services, Development Services doesn't have a large number of inspectors in the field doing just zoning and building code enforcement. So we do rely primarily on those citizen complaints as the way that we follow up on violations. After we've received those complaints, urban planning staff investigated the complaint by visiting the site and observing that a change to the exterior had indeed incurred. The work appeared to be the installation of air-source heat pumps, also called mini-splits. These systems typically consist of exterior compressor condenser units and interior air handling unit for each area with piping connecting them. It appeared at the time that the staff observed this that the work had already been completed. Again, the city requires permits for most existing building repairs and remodeling projects, including what was observed for the HVAC work at the site, which would have required a mechanical permit before being completed. Also, because of the scope of work included, a material change to the exterior of the building exterior would have triggered a historic review to be performed as well. Staff verified that the required regulated permits, the mechanical permit, had not been applied for or issued, nor had a historic review been made. Therefore, staff determined that a violation of the city's zoning ordinance and building code had occurred. Planning staff then notified the owner of the property of the violation, explained that in order to correct the violations, they would need to satisfy both the requirements of a regulated permit, the mechanical permit process, and the historic review process for the work that had already been completed. In this set of photos, you can see the white piping on the faces of the building through the trees. So I'm going to walk you through the timeline, just adding to the steps that have occurred. They're color-coded somewhat. If it's in orange, it's a staff action. So as I said, after staff investigated, urban planning staff investigated, the building code staff also went and investigated to see if a violation was observable. In August of 2022, then, the building inspection staff created an actual code of enforcement case to track the violation and confirmed, as I said, the existence of the violation. Now, a zoning violation is a municipal infraction. It does carry civil penalties per day of violation, that the violation exists. That would be something that goes to the court to be determined. And it's the policy of our department, our entire department, to attempt to resolve code violations working with the property owner in a voluntary manner, rather than just automatically pushing things into the court citations process. We don't use a pre-scripted timeline because we like to try to work with each code violation on its own terms and giving everyone flexibility to come to a mutually agreed-upon resolution. Staff does use its best judgment, though, to set deadlines for compliance, working with the property owner towards something that is satisfactory. So in the next step, you can see the green box here is an action taken by the property owner. A mechanical permit was applied for by the property owner in September. Building inspection staff, then the orange boxes, went ahead and processed a permit application for a mechanical permit. That included reviewing the application, assessing the fees, waiting for the fees to be paid, and then issuing the permit, but also placing a stop or a hold on the permit at that point, noting that the historic review approval was still necessary before the permit could be inspected and hopefully eventually pass a final inspection. This seems like, at the time, to have been a reasonable amount of time for the applicant or the owners to start the process to resolve their zoning violations. In January of 2023, then, two months after the mechanical permit was applied for, the property owner submitted the historic review application, an HPC review. In early 2023, staff was also working with the same owner on a historic review for another property under their ownership. So at that time, staff chose to help that review proceed by prioritizing the other review rather than focusing on this one for work that had already been completed. So in doing that, we took a little bit of a pause and didn't come back to this particular case until April of 2023, after the other application had run its course. At that time in April, urban planning staff again reached out to the owners regarding the need to resolve this one at 811 East College Street. Staff provided a summary of the historic review requirements, explained the work as completed would need a major review by the Historic Preservation Commission, and provided a summary of the guidelines that would be reviewed as part of that. Over the next couple months after April, really no progress was made. There'd been some contact with the property owners about who should be contacted when needed to be. But other than that, really no progress was made. So at the end of that period of May through October, staff had reached out in June and offered to meet with some times available, but really had no confirmation or follow-up. And then, at the end of that period of time over the summer, in staff's judgment, the owner was no longer considered to be acting in good faith towards a resolution. However, rather than just issuing a citation for court, staff proposed completing the historic review process since it had been started with that application and allowing the HPC to make a determination of what resolution would be acceptable in this case. So staff again reached out to the owners and proposed putting the application onto the Historic Preservation's agenda the following month in December. Once the agenda was published, staff did notify the applicant of the meeting and provided them with a packet. So in December of '23, the commission considered the application as it had been proposed, basically the work that had already been completed. And they voted to approve our certificate of appropriateness with conditions. So in doing so, they reviewed the materials that were presented to them to the Historic Preservation Preservation Guidelines. The Historic Preservation Guidelines don't include a specific chapter for this particular piece of equipment, since mechanical systems rarely impact the exterior of a historic building. The specific guidelines used in staff's review and recommendation regarding the project came from Section 10 of the Historic Preservation Handbook, which again is adopted by reference in their zoning code. And it itself is built on standards of the Secretary of Interior's guidance for historic projects when they apply to rehabilitation projects. Included on the slide are the specific components of Section 10 that were considered. Basically, there are four of them, going towards the historic character of the property being retained and preserved, distinctive features and finishes of construction on the exterior, and the craftsmanship characterizing that property to be preserved, that new additions, exterior alterations, or related construction don't destroy those valuable assets, and that new additions adjacent to or related to new construction should be undertaken in a manner that if removed in the future, essentially the form and integrity of the property could remain. Staff also provided the commission with considerations similar to, with considerations that have been made in the past for radon installation systems. Rado installation systems have been a very common request over the years, and because of that, the Historic Preservation Commission has actually come up with a set of conditions that if they're met, that the radon system can be streamlined, reviewed, and issued. So, the conditions that would apply to a radon system would be that the mitigation system be on a non-street-facing elevation of the building, preferably located in the rear if possible. And then, also, that the piping, the exposed PVC piping, if there is any for the radon system, is painted to match the structure. So, those are the guiding principles that staff used in creating its recommendation to the council. As I said, the Historic Preservation Commission did issue a certificate of appropriateness with conditions. And in that certificate of appropriateness, it memorializes the context in which they were performing the review, that the property is a key contributing property in a historic district, what the scope of the work observed was, that it was completed without historic review, and then, as I said, placed three conditions on the approval. The first be that piping on the north wall of the building and each side of the front projecting bay is relocated. Now, that's not the only location where there is piping for these HVAC systems, but they are the street-facing or most observable sides. So, the commission chose to prioritize those and request that those be, or include in their certificate appropriateness, that those be relocated. In addition, they said that all additional piping is painted to blend with the building, again coming from those similar systems like for radon, to make them blend with the building where they can't be relocated, and that any damage to the brick building caused by the project be repaired, again using the standards from the guidelines saying to preserve those historic features. Really, staff sees these conditions as a compromise solution, trying to focus on the most important facades of the building where possible. And the applicant was also encouraged to work with their contractor should they choose to do so and come up with an alternate design, and if they wanted to proceed to have that alternate design reviewed, that that process was always available. That would be essentially a separate historic review. So, the information that's come to light today, that would certainly have been appropriate information to provide, probably in addition to some drawings with some dimensions on it, explaining runs of pipes and feasibility. And we would encourage, always encourage applicants to provide alternate designs based on our feedback as the process proceeds. At this point, that would be a separate review.
So, I have a question. So, that could still take place?
That would be a re-review. So, we would start the process over, where they wouldn't officially provide us information. Probably what they provided today is not quite enough. We'd need some drawings to really dig down into dimensions and get some real numbers behind those to justify. That would then get a staff review, recommendation to the HPC. HPC would review it and decide whether they thought that was appropriate, and then work hopefully to find again a compromise where the historic value of the building can be preserved, but still be relevant.
Thank you.
So, again, we're at the end of that first historic review process, which is an appeal, which was filed in January. So, really, options going forward as part of this appeal, they can certainly follow the existing certificate appropriateness with the conditions that have been placed as part of that. They could propose an alternate alteration that doesn't meet the first certificate of appropriateness, and like I said, go through a re-review to see if that meets Historic Preservation Commission's standards. Or unfortunately, if they fail to follow the existing COA and then not reapply, city would eventually resume normal code enforcement activity and issue a notice of violation with a firm deadline for compliance, or issue a citation to appear in court. I think that's it for the review of the information that was included in your packet. There was a lot of information in there, all of the minutes and staff reports and such from the process. We're happy to answer questions if you have them.
Yeah, I have a question for you. For example, I guess want to make sure I understand this right. The historic, because this is historic. No, let me ask another question. If this vibe is not in a historic preservation building, is this like, they're going to receive also citation?
So, is the question of this was not a historic property, would they still be in a violation?
Like the same situation?
Sure. So, were any, the city requires building permits for almost all work.
If they have the building permit and nothing was illegal, but the design outside, the same vibe.
Sure. The location of the pipes would not be a consideration of just a mechanical permit by a software. It's the historic guidelines that regulate where those pipes run.
Yeah, but I'm talking if the building is not historic.
Right. So, if it's not a historic building, it would only be regulated by the building code, and the building code would not have a design guideline to it. It would certainly, it would just be the mechanical code for safety that would apply. So, if that, as long as the pipes are run in the right place to meet that, it wouldn't be an issue. Now, we haven't done an inspection of the mechanical permit, so I can't even tell you if the system has been installed safely to building code.
Yeah, that's what my question is. I want to add the second question, is this already safety or not?
We have not done that inspection, so we could not tell you. The work was all performed before we were notified of it by the application for a permit. So, to resolve that, we'll have to go do an inspection and check to see if it meets the codes.
And if I give you a hypothetical example, if you examined those pipe in a non-historic building, and it was good mechanically wise, whatever you call it, everything good, and it passed, you are not going to ask them to remove it, because the building code for that, for that building, they don't care about if the vibe outside or not.
Pipes would not, the location, the pipes on the exterior would not be part of a building mechanical permit review.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Here are no other questions. Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask Lauren Westermeier to come forth, who is the appellant. All right, welcome.
Thank you.
And you're going to represent.
Yes, so my name is Lily Westermeier. I'm here to represent my parents, the property owners, Lauren and Barry Westermeier.
Welcome.
So, we are here to appeal the Historic Preservation Council's conditions put forth in that certificate of appropriateness. Sorry. Issued for the mini-split installation. The decision on this matter was not informed by the guidelines laid out in city code. That informs the historical reviews. So, as was mentioned earlier, it's that first kind of condition that we are arguing against. We're asking that the city council modify the decision on the basis that the commission failed to follow the guidelines established by law, and then reverse the condition that requires modifications to the current system. So, as was mentioned, the building was purchased 12 years ago by the Westermiers, and in 2019, October of 2019, they installed those mini-split units to replace the failed steam heat system and the temporary window AC units, those window rattlers that, you know, make so much noise in the summer. The Historic Preservation Commission's certificate of appropriateness was issued in December of '23. That included the condition that the lines on the north and the east side of the building need to be relocated. And so, we're appealing both of, we're appealing both because the original installation was done in accordance with the guidance ascribed by law for the historic restorations of this kind, and also because the proposed changes would be inappropriate and inconsistent with the standards put forth by the Secretary of Interior that were mentioned earlier. So, here's the guidance that informs the Historical Preservation Committee and their historic reviews. It breaks down into the city guidelines and then the standards from the Secretary of Interior. We're going to look first at the ones from Iowa City. So, there's nothing included in the city guidelines specifically for HVAC projects or any like other similar mechanical projects, so there's no direct guidelines we can pull from that. And there's also no district guidance for the College Hill neighborhood that applies to this project. Most of the neighborhood-specific guidelines are just for new construction. So, from there, we're going to look at the Secretary of, the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation for guidance on the project. This is the list of 10 standards, a couple of which you just saw earlier. And in particular, I will draw your attention to points five, nine, and 10. They also mention two earlier, which is very similar. It discusses that the historical character of a property should be retained and preserved. So, standard five states that the distinctive features, finishes, and construction techniques or examples of craftsmanship that characterize a property shall be preserved. And then similarly, standard nine there states that the new additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. So, the key to both of these points is the preservation of character of the building. These photos are the before and then the after of the mini-split unit installations. I'll note that a lot of the photos you saw before were before they were painted, so they did stick out then, but we've since painted them to match the brick. There is no destruction of character apparent here. There were no changes to the historical materials, and the entire aesthetic of the building is preserved. The defining characteristics of the building are still completely intact, and that iconic white cross is unobscured. The entire main entrance has no line sets on it. And then, like I mentioned, all of those line sets have been painted to match the brick. And then, to come back to that third relevant standard that was mentioned, standard 10 that states the new additions and adjacent or related new construction shall be undertaken in such a manner that if removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic property and its environment would be unimpaired. So, this essentially means it needs to be reversible action, and no brick was removed from the building as a part of this project. If this project were to be reversed in the future when new technology came around, it would create minimal disturbance to the building. It's just the one point of entry for each one, but again, no brick was removed. Everything is still there. You know, this building has been around. It has had many, many lives before us, and it will be here long after we are all gone. And the way that this project was completed ensures that, should it need to be reversed in the future, the building's structural integrity and key characteristics would be unimpaired. So, to come back to the city code that lays out the guidelines for historical review, we see that, you know, no guidance from the historicals, no guidance that is laid out has really been disregarded in the completion of this project. So, looking at the big picture of the purpose of this historical review, the goal of it is to empower the Historical Preservation Commission to ensure that material changes to external features of landmarks and properties do not substantially alter or destroy the defining architectural characteristic of a building. And it does so through the guidelines that were previously explained. This project has by no means substantially altered the defining architectural character of this building. The changes are not egregious or patently obvious. They do not alter any significant architectural aspects of the building, and again, they are completely reversible. The addition of the line sets created minimal disturbance to the overall aesthetic of the building. Again, they were painted to match the brick. This is evident, they were painted to match the brick, and they blended well. The placement is very discreet. It is by no means overt, which I think is evidenced by the fact that there was a significant gap in time between when the project was completed in October of 2019 and when the issue was brought to the property owners in July of 2022. This project was complete for three years before anyone noticed it, anyone said anything about it, which shows just how minimal the changes were made to the facade by adding these line sets. There's also, like I mentioned earlier, no alteration to the architecture of the building. The defining characteristics are still completely intact. The facade was not irreversibly destroyed or altered, and this system is up to date and considered best practice for buildings of this age. And it'll allow for us to, you know, easily pivot in 30 years to the newest and best system that, you know, is even better. So, as I've just outlined, we've had no substantial changes to the defining architectural character of the building, and therefore, the project fails to meet the conditions outlined by city code in regards to the historic review. So, I've shown you why the current system should remain in place and has not broken any of the guidelines that the city lays out for buildings in historic districts. But we're also asking the commission, we're asking for the commission's decision to be reversed, because the changes that they are asking be made would have a much more significant impact on the building than the current system. The commission is asking that the piping on the north and the east wall of the buildings be relocated. This relocation would necessarily require that the lines go through the interior of the building and then up back to the roof. This is a request that would not only go against the best practices of what is recommended for the mini-split systems, but it would also create a significant impact on the building itself. So, the current systems were installed based on best practices. I know you guys have those letters from Schife Hattery and then from Davis Heating and Air stating, you know, discussing the installation of the systems and the ways in which they maybe can and cannot be changed. The direct lines are really important, so we have them going directly from the unit up to the top. And this is important because they need to follow the manufacturer's guidelines, and to reroute the line sets either through that interior of the building or then along to the back of the building would cause them to exceed their maximum length, and it would render them ineffective. The current installation also allows for really easy maintenance of the system, which is important for the longevity of the project, because ideally, this is something that will be there for 30 years. So, both Mr. Bachinsky and Mr. Davis noted in their letters that routing through the building and then up to the roof would create opportunities for leaks and condensation, along with a significant structural impact on the interior of the building. So, that list of 10 standards that is cited in the historical guidelines is supported by a set of then more in-depth guidelines by the Department of Interior that outlines best practices for restoration of historic buildings. These are meant to inform the ways that those 10 standards are then carried out. So, in their recommendations for mechanical systems like HVAC, they do not recommend concealing mechanical equipment in walls or ceilings in a manner that results in extensive loss or damage, or otherwise obscures restoration period building materials and features. So, the certificate of appropriateness that was issued, the conditions that they have would necessarily, like I said, require the lines to be redirected through the building, which would require openings in the ceilings and walls. The building has significant interior architectural features that belong to its relevant restoration period, so the time when it was, you know, at its heyday, including a lot of decorative plaster, some very, very beautiful woodwork, a lot of built-in cabinetry. All of this would be harmed in the event of the line sets being moved inside. And then, again, back to the general standards that were outlined earlier, the reversibility of this change proposed by the commission is significantly less than that of the current project. So, to tear down all those walls, to tear down the ceiling, to go through the building up to the roof would be far less reversible than the system that is currently in place. The guidelines do recommend installing air conditioning units if needed in such a manner that excessive moisture is not generated, and that will accelerate deterioration of materials from the restoration period. So, as a reminder, both Mr. Davis and Mr. Bachinsky in their letters made note of the condensation that would occur should those lines be rerouted through the building, and then the possibility of leaks being introduced when they would then have to go up to the roof. So, you would have condensation inside and then leaks coming down from the roof. Running them outside was done to reduce that risk of moisture that would lead to the rotting wood and mold. So, again, this is a guideline that informs that list of 10, and the way that the project was completed is best in alignment with this guideline. So, all of these are reasons that the conditions for the approval set forth by the Historic Preservation Commission would not only be harmful to this historic building, but also go against the guidelines set forth in city code that were followed when completed the completing the original project. So, in conclusion, it's a reasonable, is very reasonable that buildings of this age will need some changes to maintain their livability, efficiency, and their aging interiors. The installation of the mini-split units was entirely necessary, appropriate, and it was done in a way that maintained the integrity of the building in accordance with the guidelines that the city lays out for historical preservation. of the building in accordance with the guidelines that the city lays out for historical preservation. The current system does not require any modifications to follow the city or the Department of Interior's guidance that informs historical review. Rather, the changes proposed by the Historical Preservation Committee would create a significant impact on the building that would itself go against those guidelines that are laid out. This project made no substantial alterations to the exterior of the building, and therefore, the Historic Preservation Commission was incorrect in its conditions proposed in their certificate of appropriateness, and their decision should be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, any questions for the appellant?
I, I have a question. Um, what part of the Historic Preservation's commission, commission's decision do you believe was arbitrary or capricious, if, if any?
So we were not arguing on the, the basis of it being arbitrary or capricious. We were arguing on kind of like that first, um, bit that they did not follow the, the guidance that was laid out for them in city code. So it's, it's either that or arbitrary or capricious.
So you're, you're arguing their interpretation was, was incorrect?
Yes, I'm arguing that, um, the project was completed in compliance with all of those guidelines. There was nothing in those guidelines laid out that was, um, you know, not followed or that we went against.
So your argument is that, uh, no reasonable person could come to the conclusion that they did? That would have to be the argument, correct?
Yes, the argument is that the guidelines that are laid out for them to follow, we did not break any of those guidelines. We did not go against any of those guidelines.
But for our, for our purposes, our, our decision has to be whether or not any reasonable person could come to the conclusion that they did, if we're not talking about arbitrary and capriciousness. So I just want to be clear, you're arguing that no reasonable person could come to the conclusion that they did?
Yes.
Just so that I have my facts correct, um, there was no mechanical permit applied for this project at the time of the installation.
Uh, there was no mechanical permit applied for. There was an electrical permit applied for, and then the mechanical permit has been retroactively applied for.
Okay.
And, and it was my understanding, and again, this was of course after the fact.
If you can use the microphone, please, and state your name.
And this was after the fact, that once a permit is, is applied for, it should trigger a historical review. And so the electrical permit was applied for, and it did not trigger a review.
Was the electrical permit approved?
Uh, to that, I don't know. I could go on my, uh, but it was applied for.
Danielle, was it approved? Yes, please. And maybe I'm going down a rabbit hole because I think that Counselor Dunn was in the right place, but.
Before we do that, the last speaker should identify herself for the record.
Yes, yes.
I'm Laura Westmeyer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's a bit of a gap in our permit history because we went from one permit system to another between 2019 and 2020, but the records were all imported into the new system. So the information's laid out just slightly differently. But when I look up a 2019 electrical permit, it was applied for, but the fee was never paid and the permit was never issued.
Okay, I, I guess I have a question for you too, before you leave. Uh, you know, the historic preservation, I know that they care about the, the exterior design and everything, but do they also went inside? And so like, if they did, the, the, the thing that they recommended, it will harm, like, also this historic feature, like, interiorly.
No, we limit our review to the exterior of the building. We don't have any, uh, opinion on the interior of the building. So that's beyond our, the regulatory, uh, powers of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Sure.
Any other questions by counsel for the appellant?
I have a couple of things I'd like to say.
Can I actually ask one question? Um, and it was in regards to talking about the no bricks were added or removed, but I understood in going through the notes that in fact there was drilling to anchor.
Yes.
Right, so the bricks have been?
There's, there's been like a little hole put through the, the.
To hold all of the piping up.
To, yes, to just take it up to the, to the top, yes.
To hold an access.
Yes.
Which is the same thing going to happen again, if we went inside and went outside again.
Oh, absolutely.
You're gonna do the same thing that you did.
But our code only regulates what's on the outside.
And this is also though to replace the window air conditioners that stick out on the outside, continue to damage the building. Um, there's a lot of tuck pointing that we've had to do on the building over the years because of water. Water is the greatest eroder on the earth. And so being able to actually, and actually, in a sense, I mean, and again, I certainly don't want to get technical because I'm not the person to do that, but, um, if you were to look at the window air conditioners, that water just guttered right down onto the building. It wasn't at all, it just, it, uh, rolled down the building and it, and it did damage to the building. What we did instead, basically, is install a new guttering system to allow that water to then be able to go off the building so it stopped doing damage. And I think the, the appearance of those line sets look far better than the window units ever did, and are so much more efficient, so much more green, and so much better for the carbon footprint. The, one of the other things I'd like to add is, I did apply for a permit earlier than that. I was actually at the city council. I had somebody help me with the portal. I've done, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of, uh, construction work, repair work, uh, and had never applied for a permit before. Typically, your contractors apply for the permits. So when I applied for their permit, I applied for a building permit, which was incorrect. So there was also process with that. And then when I applied for the permit, um, it was given to us, like, when I called the guy, I gave him my credit card and, um, because actually I called to see why I hadn't, there hadn't been follow-up. And then he was like, oh, you did a building permit, you need a mechanical permit. And so then I gave him my credit card and he paid for it, and it was issued. So it's, what I will tell you is, historical preservation is one of the most confusing things I've done, and I'm almost 60. Um, it is, it is not clear-cut. It's, we had some stairs replaced, which I think you have the, the information on that. And it was a very clear-cut process in a sense of just, it was very easily to see that it was exterior, that the stairs were exterior, because there's no guidelines for HVAC systems, because, uh, even, even with the Department of Interior, guidelines for HVAC systems, um, aren't completely easy to find. Um, it never dawned on me that this was an exterior project. It's, the boiler was inside the basement. Um, the, the radiators, which we've taken very few of those out because they're beautiful, the radiators, radiators were inside the building, and again, they, uh, not efficient at all. Um, you know, it was, it was a bad process with, uh, the noise and everything else that happened with the radiators. Um, and then, uh, all of the piping was inside the building. The only interior or exterior, if you want to say, um, part, were the air conditioners, and even those you install interiorly. So I don't, like, yes, I was at fault for not applying for the permit, but I do think reasonable people would understand that this is not clear. And the steps that we had altered, um, on our carriage house, it was very clear that those were exterior. But a mechanical system was not clear to me at all that this was an exterior project, because everything was interior. Uh, in the wintertime, everything was interior. In the summertime, the only exterior was a small amount of, um, the compressor, and that's disgustingly ugly. So honestly, in my, and I think any reasonable person would honestly say that that building is far more beautiful without the, uh, the window units. Um, definitely my tenants will tell you, even those that were not excited necessarily, they will tell you that this, uh, every reasonable person would tell you that this is a far better, more efficient way to heat this building than if we were to have continued to do it, um, you know, in a sense, the old-fashioned way. Um, and the other thing that I do want to, uh, talk about, a couple of other things, it is completely reversible. And when you read interior, uh, the Department of the Interior standards, having things that are completely reversible are the most important thing, um, because this building will live beyond us. And this is very, very minor, very, very minor, uh, damage, and there's nothing else that could have been done and, um, or that could have, that we could have done to this point with, uh, current standards to have done this building with any less damage.
I'm gonna make sure that if the council has any more questions that
Oh, sure.
we get that answer. And then if you, uh, if you have additional information that hasn't been presented at this time, you can offer that.
Okay. And so, well, the only other thing that I want to point out is on, it's towards the last, it's the blue sheet of the, of what I handed you guys. It's also on the, um, yeah, oh, where is it? Get it up there? Oh. You can't, you can't. Oh, I can't. Sure, wait a.
Do you have it if you, what you mean?
Okay, yes, yeah. Well, it's so tiny.
Yes.
It's the only thing. I mean, I can read.
That's, uh, this one here, maybe?
Okay.
We can look at this one.
So if you look at, I mean, and I, and I guess with the commission, the commission did not have this information when they were looking at what would, what would a reasonable person do with HVAC. And if you look at what the Department of the Interior says specifically about HVAC, which is what we're talking about, specifically HVAC. Um, so it talks about retaining and maintaining the functional and efficient HVAC system. So we, we installed, uh, or the, actually, the previous owner, we had everything that we could have done. Uh, the fans, we had ceiling fans, we had lots of things. We did everything we could to extend the life of that, that boiler for as long as we could extend the life of the boiler.
Did you prevent, present this information to the commission?
I, I did.
This particular one that we're talking about?
Can I tell you, this has been confusing. I, I just, you know, like, um, I guess, I, I thought we were going to go and that it had been mentioned that we would be able to paint them red. And so we had painted them red. So my understanding, I'm sorry, was that we could talk to the commission about, we're gonna paint them red, and this is, we, you know, we've, what's, what's up there is much more beautiful than the air conditioner system. I didn't realize I literally should have hired an attorney. And, and so I guess, again, when I say the historical process is confusing, it is very confusing.
I guess, I had a question about that. Given that it sounds like you, there's opportunities both to, to prevent, sorry, to provide this information, as well as you saying there was some kind of communication at some point about your belief that you could paint it red. And I guess, I, I'm just curious because it sounds like there was absolute radio silence, um, in spite of staff, um, reaching out for four months. And I mean, certainly, it was on your radar that it was like, oh, we've done something that they don't, that we're not supposed to, or we need to trigger a historic review. So I'm just curious because, I mean, obviously, there's, you know, you've
Okay, yes, yes.
brought a lot to bear on this, and there was an opportunity.
I, I totally understand your question. To put it carefully, I am married. My husband is one of the other persons on this project. He, this is his project. This was what he was taking care of. I think, maybe he's not the best communicator. I don't know exactly how to express that, but ultimately, um, I, I trusted that he was doing what he needed to do. So, um, and, and I trusted that my mechanical permit guy would have pulled a permit. Like, I, you know, I did a complete HVAC remodel on one of my buildings and Brant Heating and Air, pulled a permit. I, I don't know those things. I mean, you know, I think when you do construction, you just don't know that permits are or aren't pulled because you just, I don't know, I mean, you sign the little thing that says, I will do this to the standard of, you know, I mean, I have a signature from, or I have, I have a little contract I signed with my contractor to, you know, do this, and he probably let me down.
Okay. Well, I want to, unless there's something more that you want to say.
Just on this sheet of paper, that purple, the blue document, which I think is really the most, like, accurate way to define how to do HVAC systems under the Department of the Interior, it talks about, um, retaining or installing high-efficiency ductless air conditioners when appropriate, which may be more sensitive approach than installing a new ducted central air conditioning system that may damage, uh, historic building material. So that's in the list of, um, recommended. So that is in the list of recommended. If you go down that recommended list, that is what we did. Um, so if you're installing new mechanical ductwork sensitive or using a mini duct system, so we did a mini split ductless system, um, there's just no other way we could have done this project with, and to have not damaged the building more, and to make it as efficient as it is, to think about our carbon footprint, all of those things. So, and also, it talks about leaving interior ductwork exposed, which again, what they're asking us to do is exactly the opposite. So I'm just, I mean, I wish, now I, now I know, uh, I guess, uh, but, uh, you know, you, you, uh, do your best, and you, you know, sometimes I guess we all make mistakes. Uh, but, you know, I think that we've got a beautiful building. I think we're good landlords. I think that affordable housing is a consideration. I think we try to provide affordable housing, even though it's a beautiful building, to many of our tenants, uh, to have long-term tenants. So it's a pretty precarious situation to be in, to be a successful landlord in this community with an old building. I could bring in a lot of college kids that are gonna pay a lot more, um, you know, stack them in there, but they're not gonna take care of the beauty of the inside of this building. And then pretty soon, we're gonna have the issue of, uh, destruction, what's it called? Uh, sorry, I've done more research than I want to say, uh, where it's, uh, basically demolition by neglect, which is another continual, uh, continual, uh, continual, uh, you know, those big words. Uh, it's, it's, you continually read about it when you are talking about a historical, uh, historical preservation. A lot of things end up being, uh, neglected, and then they're demolished because they're neglected. And so, again, it is a difficult situation to, to own one of these in Iowa City, and yet try to do everything that you can to make it beautiful and keep it beautiful. And I think we've been successful doing that.
I have a question for you. If we would have done what the recommended, recommended by the historic preservation, did you calculate how much it's gonna cost you?
So that is in the bid by, uh, our contractor. I think it was around 15,000.
This is just to do it, not to, and even, that is maintaining cost.
It's not really, I mean, yes, the cost is one factor, but it's continual maintenance. We, we really can't, I mean, quite frankly, it's, I mean, if we're really talking about the longevity of the building, that is not a good thing to do. It would be continual maintenance. There, what you would have to do is, basically, the hallways in that building are not air-conditioned. So it would go from an air-conditioned unit through a hallway into another air-conditioned unit. And again, like Shif Hattery says, it can't even go that far. Um, but then that would be air conditioning, no air conditioning, air conditioning, which would cause condensation. Um, so the, they were put on the front strictly because that's the only place they could have been put. Those apartments do not have any other wall that faces to the exterior. It's strictly those, I mean, and again, there's, you know, 12 apartments in that building. So the fact, and many of the apartments have two and some have three of those units. So the fact that we were able to engineer it where there are only five units that we're needing to move, considering that there's probably 30 on that building, um, I think there's a lot, uh, when I talked with Todd about this, the main question I had for him is, have you done historic buildings? He said, yes, I've done historic buildings. Um, after the fact, when I found that he hadn't, uh, what do you call it, um, got the permit, I asked him why, and he said, we, I don't typically get permits for mini duct systems. So I don't know, guys. I mean, I'm sometimes pretty confused as well. Uh, but we did a great job with our steps. The, the, we followed all of the rules with the steps. I did not, because everything is interior, almost 100% interior, 100% interior in the wintertime, you know, the window units on the back, I didn't think that, you know, it just didn't dawn on me.
Any more questions from council?
I want to ask the staff.
Game collection.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I did not, because everything is interior, almost 100% interior, 100% interior in the wintertime, you know, the window units on the back, I didn't think that, you know, it just didn't dawn on me.
Any more questions from council?
I want to ask the staff.
Game question.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, the thing here about the HBCAC, and did the historic preservation notice?
Because if I look at it, this is a requirement, okay, done, we did it. What do you think about that?
So those are relevant standards, obviously, it's just screen capture of not an entire page. Our guidelines don't go into the recommendations that this screen capture is promoting, which is, are certainly valuable things like energy efficiency, we don't regulate energy efficiency. So these are going above and beyond our standards, but the one that seems most relevant is the one that says installing that, the equipment that retains the historic character of the building. So I think that's very much in line with our current standards, as expressed in our handbook, which say, when you do projects, you need to preserve the historic, historic character of the building in doing so. I don't think these conflict with our standards, but they're sort of a different approach to advising someone when they do a project of these other valuable things to consider, like energy efficiency.
And you said area, the, the, to obtain a permit is responsibility of the contractor or of the owner?
The owner of the property is responsible for their property. So if they hire a contractor, and part of their agreement with their contractor is for them to pull a permit, that's, that can be the case, but ultimately, the responsibility is the property owner's responsibility.
And any building in the city now, they have duct, they always come and get permit?
Right. The building code has been in place for decades, and it's had very few exclusions of work that need to, that should have a permit, so it should be fairly well-known in the contractor base when a permit's required.
And if someone did it without a permit, but they did it right, there is no historic preservation or anything to that building, are you going to give them citation?
If we find out someone's done work without a permit in a nonhistoric district, there would still be a code violation, they would still need to correct it in the same manner by getting a permit, they'll get an extra fee because they've done work without a permit, so they kind of a penalty in that phase. Then we go inspect the work, if they've installed it improperly, they have to remove the work, put it back in correctly. I don't know that that's the case here, but in any other
Yeah, I'm just asking generally.
Because you've put something in without a permit, doesn't mean you get to keep it that way.
Sure, and any contractor should not do any job without seeing the permit from the city.
Can you say that again?
Any contractor should not done any job without seeing the permit from the city, right?
Correct.
Based on your earlier comments, Danielle, I just want to be sure about something. It sounded like that there is an opportunity to seek, to kind of approach this again. If we were to deny the appeal and the certificate of appropriateness, or if we didn't alter it, if it stayed in place as it was, the owner has the option to go back and say, here's all this information that they didn't have a chance to consider in the first review, and those factors could influence the Historic Preservation Commission determination of a new certificate of appropriateness.
Absolutely, and that new certificate of appropriateness would overwrite the previously issued one.
Okay.
Would there be any problem with the time in between those applications?
I think if they're working in a good faith manner to submit that application, that we would withhold any action until they've gone through the process again. Certainly wouldn't want it to take five months again.
Sound good.
If there are no other
I'm sorry, I just have a question for the attorney. So from a process standpoint, I just want to be really clear on our, our standard of review and what we are considering. So if the information that the Historic Preservation Commission didn't have a chance to consider, but was presented to us tonight, that's not part of our consideration, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and if the, the, some of the very important and helpful and good things that the property owner is wanting to do in energy efficiency, and a comparison of this system with the old system, those are not variables that we would consider, correct?
Also correct.
But we could consider, well, no, actually, let me ask. In terms of the integrity of the historicity within the building, that is also not our purview, correct? I guess that's maybe to Danielle, who had said
Right.
that there's no regulation over interiors. However, if modifications had to be done, to redo, to, to fit with the current certificate of approval, the damage that has been described as potential, or as a likelihood, or what have you, would actually structurally impact the building, correct? And would that be something that we would have to consider?
I'm sorry, I want to make sure I followed your question. The hypothetical you're offering is that the installation, as called for by the Historic Preservation and their certificate of appropriateness, is going to cause
Structural damage.
structural damage?
Yeah.
I guess the objection that would raise is facts not in evidence at present, but
Fair enough, this is why I'm not a lawyer.
Right, right, but of course, we're not in a court of law, so I'll try to answer in more layman's terms. Right, I think that there was an opportunity to discuss that, and
I guess it's something that we could take into consideration, as opposed to talking about energy efficiency.
I think, well, I think maybe a, a different question, if I could just finish, is that interior, that the balancing of, here's what we want to do on the outside, but here's what we think would happen on the inside if we had to do that, could be taken into account by the Historic Preservation Commission as to the substantiality of the outdoor change, correct?
Right, the impossibility of work, and maybe that's what you're getting at, Counselor Alter, would certainly be something the HPC would consider.
But that's not part of our review of their action?
That's correct.
Our, our action at this point is
Reasonable.
is reasonability.
Make a reasonable decision based on what information and guidelines they had at the time.
Right, wasn't an arbitrary and capricious decision?
This means like, for this, for today, the action that needed from us, either to approve it or not, say yes or no, and can we suggest something else? Can we say, can you go back and sit down and figure it out? Because I really believe that, you know, maybe there is an artist person, or somebody who can look those, like make this pipe look really nice and have on it plants, which is, well indeed, nobody would recognize them. So if that could be an option, I really believe that instead of like, because I, I believe the, the historic preservation, okay, they, they, they went through the guideline and they come up with this, but there is many thing now, if this has, if we agree to, like, if we said yes, we, they have to take them out, and this is going to cause a lot of them inside, and going, also like costs money and all this, can we just come up to reasonable solution, say, yeah, can we retain it back without voting on it?
Right, I don't think the council's role is to act as mediator, or to offer a compromise solution. It's just whether or not, you know, if, even if reasonable minds might differ, even if you, or the council more broadly, would have made a different decision, it's just, you know, were they out of left field, were they arbitrary and capricious in the decision they made? And, and so, the decision, or the options available to the council are to affirm, just as it is, and maybe that's followed by what Ms. Sizman mentioned a moment ago, which is that the property owners go back to historic preservation and try to pursue the kind of things that you're describing, and many others have been describing, and work with the HPC, you know, make the argument that it's impossible to do in a way that the HPC would envision, or whatever the case may be. So that's one option. Two is to grant the property owner's appeal and say, yes, we hereby modify the decision and remove one, two, or all three of the conditions that are imposed in the certificate of appropriateness. Or, well, yes, I think those would be, I was thinking, you give either some of what the landowner, property owner is requesting, or all of what the property owner is requesting, those are kind of the three options that are available.
Or we could defer.
Well, tell me what you, I'm not sure what you mean by defer.
We could, I'm, I'm just saying, like, for the scope of what we're discussing, like, we could make a defer.
I don't know that we can.
We're in the public hearing.
Isn't it just like that?
I'm just saying, I mean, it would just push it for another meeting, right?
Right, I'm sorry, to answer your question, legally, could you move to defer? Sure.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's correct.
But, but I want to ask you, isn't this the same thing like when we are, we kind of not agreeing with the planning and zoning, not like not agreeing, but we want to hear more, and we just defer it?
Consult?
Yes.
Right, there, the planning and zoning code calls for consults, there's no equivalent provision in the city code for a consult with the Historic Preservation Commission.
And Mayor Protam, I just want to be clear, and anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I do believe if we say the, if we deny the appeal, all that happens is the certificate of appropriateness with those conditions stays in place. The property owner can choose to go back and make their case to the Historic Preservation Commission. We're not requiring that they pull everything out and start over, or, you know, that, that's an option, they could do that if they want to follow the certificate of appropriateness as approved currently, and we do not modify it. But we're not mandating a, the change in the system unless they choose that. I mean, that, that, if, they could choose to follow the certificate of appropriateness, but we're not saying that's your only option.
To be clear, if, if the council affirms the decision, and they do not go back to the HPC to get a modification and so forth, then eventually, staff would move forward with a, you know, municipal infraction and look for court compliance.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? I promise there'll be a little more. So, you were saying, well, we could remove one, or all, or some of the conditions to the certificate of approval, but that would be predicated on us saying, yes, the, the, that decision was capricious and arbitrary?
Yes.
Or they were outside of their, they weren't using regulations in an appropriate manner, or were making up their own, correct?
Right.
That's what, that's the basis for being able to say, we believe we could take something out, not just because we feel we, we, that's a good one to take out.
You're correct.
It has to be predicated on actions that the Historic Preservation Commission took or did not take, correct?
Right, it would have to be your conclusion that they acted in an arbitrary or capricious fashion.
Thank you.
I mean, the, the same kind of criteria and review that Historic Preservation cited, were cited by the property owners, I don't think there's any dispute about
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that if there was some modification, it was based, again, it has to go back to that.
That arbitrary and capricious standard.
Correct.
That's correct.
All right, so I want council to know that soon we'll be able to deliberate, and it sound like, when we get there, we should be able to make some decisions relatively quickly. We're going to ask for the public to come forth in, in a little bit, and then I'm going to, after that, I'm going to close the public hearing, at which time, council, I want to make sure that we all know, I'm going to ask for a motion to affirm the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission. And so that, that will be the motion, okay? All right, we're going to invite the public at this time, anyone who wants to discuss this matter, if you are in line, please raise your virtual hand, and I will call upon you. If there's anyone that want to speak to this matter from the public, if not, I will close the public hearing. I see no hands, I see no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to affirm the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Alter, and would love if you all use your last names tonight. Thank you. All right, a council discussion.
I think we're just in a really tough spot here. I, I don't disagree with hardly anything that you've presented on, about the, about your personal values, about your value for the building, its character, or, you know, your care for the community generally, as well as the value that the, the changes add to the building and its long-term integrity. Unfortunately, I think when it comes to our question, where we have to judge whether the Historic Preservation Commission, with the information that it had at the time of its decision, made a decision based on your own admission that is wholly unreasonable, at this time, I can't come to that conclusion. I think that the discussion that we've come to today has led to a, I think, a very good path forward, outside of this appeal, in which you guys can go and, and take the information that you've presented us, and, and try to give another whack at it in good faith. But based on the information review of the minutes of the, of the meeting itself, and the reasonability standard that we've kind of all agreed, that we're assessing, I don't believe there's any other proper decision but to affirm.
Okay, well, I'll jump in there, and normally, I can't wait. I, I'm going to agree with, I'm going to allow your words to speak for me tonight. But I do want to just say, on a personal note, I know the Westermeyers very well, absolutely love them, they're great landlords. Oftentimes, when we sit in this position, we are having our best friends come before us, and it's, it's, it's a difficult thing, but at the end of the day, we have to wear our hats as, in our role, and, so I, I don't believe that the information that they had at the time, maybe painted a full picture, it, you know, they could have this information and still arrive at the same decision, but given what they were given, I will be affirming their decision. One thing I will say is, it appears to me that the HVAC guidelines, which there are none, there may need to be some written up, and in my mind, I know that the radon, that was addressed, you know, at some point, it probably happened after the fact, and, you know, the, the Historic Preservation Commission came up with, with the decision, or they talked, discussed how they're going to address that. I imagine that gutter systems also has been discussed, and have some guidelines in this to me. If I didn't know that it was a part of an HVAC system, I would think that it was a gutter that didn't go all the way down to the ground, and it was missing part of it. So, again, there needs to be some attention by staff, and some discussion by the Historic Preservation, I believe, is warranted. So, I will be affirming them, but I do want to say thanks to you all for coming and sharing this information with us tonight.
I would all, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was, I, this is my line of work, when I'm not sitting up here, is to do historic preservation design, and it is complicated, so I have complete empathy for the sort of difficulty that it can take, and the time that it takes, and some of the checks and balances to make sure you get it right, is through that building permit process, and I just feel so bad for you, because you now have this thing that's installed, and this conversation wished could have happened before it's there, stuck on the side of your building, but when we get to the decision of, of what we're supposed to do, is what does the Historic Preservation Commission, how are they thinking about this, or did, were they reasonable? I will, I'll be affirming that choice, but I'm, I'm so sorry for you that you, that your contractor did not pull a permit, I think it has been very different for you.
And all I was going to say is that I, I hope that, you know, as frustrating and confusing as this process have been, I hope that, you know, it's also been, at least in this moment, productive and not necessarily super negative. Of course, it's not the outcome that you, you wanted, but, you know, it's, it's, at least my goal, that these types of things, and to positive resolutions, whatever that resolution may be. So, I, I hope you take that away from this, at least.
I think just to, to kind of piggyback, and having family members who have worked as contractors, it really sounds like this person dropped the ball. My mom was a roofing contractor in Iowa City and the surrounding area for lots of years, and many times, conversations about the challenges of work in the, like, historic areas of Town Summit, you know, places like that, so, so I, I was surprised to learn that, that the contractor wouldn't have followed up, or thought that they didn't need to do that for whatever reason, so. But kind of echoing everything that has been set up here, I don't really have much more to add to it, other than hopefully the information you have gathered, and if you move forward and choose to kind of reapply this kind of thing, that then it'll be, you know, much, what the process should have been at the very, very first time through, and, and sort of that give and take, and, and looking for where it's possible and where it isn't, so. So I guess I, I wish you luck with that, but I also feel I have to affirm this, because I think it's just pretty laid out, as everyone else has laid out as well.
Well, I think I would add, is I heard, you know, this kind of mismatch in communication, and so hopefully, going forward, there's, you know, more just capacity or understanding in that, like, we, we really do want people to get to the point where they can have a successful project, and to do that as soon as possible, so that we're not in this position of having, you know, you having this super complicated procedural thing to try and, you know, keep what's there on the building. I also will be supporting affirming the Historic Preservation Commission, but yeah, like my colleague said, not any ill will relating to that.
So I'm also going to affirm the vote, mainly because this was an incredibly constrained and limited focus that was ours to have, I mean, you I mean, you heard us talking to Eric and trying to say, okay, so is it this, is it this, and we had such a narrow, kind of like, working within what they had at the time, did they act appropriately? And, and they did. I also completely and wholeheartedly hope that, you know, you go and try to get a new COA, and to echo Counselor Burgess, that, that there's a real understanding, the complexity of this, that there's a very, very concerted effort to communicate, you know, with, with the, the commission, to provide them with this new information, as well as to make sure that whoever your contractor is, that, you know, everybody's on the same page, and that all the steps are followed. I'm sorry that this was such a pain. And on the flip side, though, I see some amazing pictures of the inside of your building, as well as hearing some really, reading some really wonderful things about you, and it is a bright spot, given that we know in Iowa City landlords do not always get shown with a bright light, so thank you for that, and I wish you the best.
Yeah, I would be different. The, I think, you know, historic preservation is really complicated things, and I, I, I've been trying to study this, and I'm trying to figure out exactly about historic, for me, I think it's really difficult. And also their rules is really confusing and difficult. I went through many things of them while I was looking at it, and I don't think a lot of people will understand it. I really encourage the city to do more education about this to the people, especially if we want to ask them to make their building historic, or like to be reserved as a historic building. And I think also the people who wish, like, agree to preserve their building as a historic, the city should really try to work with them hard to make sure this is not a burden on them while they're preserving and trying to take care of the outside and everything, to make sure that they have support from the city. Even though, like, my vote is not, like, voting no for this is not going to change the decision, but for the record, I'd love to vote no for this, because I believe that they should have, like, have more time to sit down and figure out things. I believe this vibe could be turning to, like, many, like, design or anything that will work for this, rather than, like, going through all this, and I believe the historic preservation, like, went to the conclusion fast. They should have taken their time, meet with them, figure out another solution. Now we want to return it to them, so we can figure out, because I think most of the people here believe, yeah, we want to affirm their decision, but at the same time, yeah, go over there and do this. But for me, I'm going to vote no, that's it.
All right, roll call, please.
Mo?
Affirm, yes.
Right, so again, the motion is to affirm, so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sala?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Mo, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to one, or seven to zero. All right, we're going to move on to item number 11B, Greater Iowa City Inc. lease. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign lease amendment number two to a lease agreement with Greater Iowa City Inc. to renew their lease for the merged space with an Iowa City Public Library extending the lease for four years. I'm going to open the public hearing, and it looks like Rachel is coming up, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Kilburg-Varely, Economic Development Coordinator. So at tonight's work session, you had a chance to hear from the Greater Iowa Sync, Iowa City Inc. leadership team about all the great work they're doing, and as they went through their slides, you saw a lot of those photos, a lot of it's happening in this merged space. So this is a city-owned space, and we've leased to Greater Iowa City Inc., formerly the Iowa City Area Development Group, or ICAD. Since 2015, the current lease ends in February or is up for renewal at the end of February here. So we currently lease the space to the organization at a reduced rate, and we view that rent subsidy as kind of an in-kind contribution to our overall support for the organization and the services they provide. Kind of some background, merged was initially came to be as a partnership largely between ICAD and the University of Iowa as a place to mentor entrepreneurs and provide resources and training opportunities to them. Today, as you all know, and as Nancy's team shared earlier, it's really grown into a big collaboration hub for a lot of local economic development stakeholders, business owners, up-and-coming entrepreneurs, all kinds of people. So it's, it's a space where, you know, people come, and, and we view it as an important asset to our local economic development ecosystem, so we would recommend continuing to support the organization, organization through this way, and approving the lease renewal, which would be another four-year term.
And can I know how much is we leasing it for them?
So it's $2,000 a month.
And they use it to, they leasing the space to other, or they give it to them for free? I don't know that. Like, the, because it is space.
Like the co-working space?
Yes.
So Nancy, if I'm getting something wrong, let me know. But the, it's paid to access the co-working space, they occasionally have, you know, open co-working hours, as they mentioned earlier tonight, so a certain Friday of the month, and then it depends on types of events and programming that they hold there.
What about the business space, like, if somebody have a business?
I'll share that we sublet some offices, so we have offices that are in there, primarily targeted at emerging businesses, so it's a discount for them to get them started, so they incubate there. So that funding comes in, and then also we have bench space for entrepreneurs, bench space for remote workers, and the conference rooms, people do pay in, it's just at a lower level. So there is a revenue cycle there that helps support the entire thing, and it really extends for support for the entire city.
And do you have a, do you have a lease limit? Like, you can be there only for one year or two year?
We do not have a lease limit, which maybe we should, but what we do is try to be as flexible as possible for new companies. We probably should have some stronger standards with what kind of entity they are, but we try to keep it flexible, because everyone's situation is a little bit different, and we want to be supportive to get them going.
Sure.
Will, will you state your name and position for the record?
Nancy Bird, President of Greater I C. And I also wanted to add, we do, we appreciate the, the lease rate that we have, but we also pay, pay property taxes, which is significantly more than the lease.
And, and you, you give them, like, some kind of support while they're renting there?
Yes, so they incubate there, and then we have resources, and we build community in that space, so they're getting to know people, especially if they're new, and, you know, we have, hold all the business support classes, million cups, all those things are happening, so they are getting exposed to a lot of resources they never would if they were to lease somewhere else, or find cheap, a cheap space somewhere on the edge of town.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Great. Any other, anything else from you, Rachel?
Good questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand, and I do see a telephone number that is on there, so I believe it's star nine is how you can begin to speak. If you're wanting to do, to comment on this item. Seeing no one in person or online, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
I did.
All right, moved by Sala.
Second, Alter.
All right, and council discussion.
I just believe, yeah, this is, this is really great, like, to open up an unity for the people who want to test this business. If it, like, working, I always liked this idea of, like, an area for the people to test their businesses. If it's working, I will go outside and rent, like, something bigger, but if it doesn't work, so that's it, I tried, it doesn't work, and so I, I think this is really good, and also I'm looking forward to find the same thing for, for my back community entrepreneur who want to open also their businesses, for example, restaurant and something like that, if we can find an incubator like this. But I, even the idea that I have in my mind about this, it come from the Mary, because I thought your ideas, and it's really great. Just keep up the good work, thank you.
All right.
I'll say one thing, I'll say one thing.
Oh, sure.
I think in my, in my conversation with Jeff, I learned that the previous tenant was a, was a pizza place, and I, yeah, so I, I do believe that this is a better use of our space for our community, so I would also just echo what was previously said. Happy to have you there, hope to have you there for a long time.
You could bring back the gelato, though.
Yes. And I, and I will add that the merged space does have individuals from the BIPOC community there, and so it is, I love that it's downtown as well. All right.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11C, sale of 3351 Winter Drive, resolution authorizing conveyance of a single-family home located at 3351 Winter Drive. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome Tracy.
Hi, I'm Tracy Heishew with Neighborhood and Development Services. Last year, we initiated two proceedings for condemnation, one on a home on Governor, the other house, this one, 3351 Winter Green. The house on Governor has been acquired, we have sold it, those renovations are in place, the nuisances are abated. Now we get to 3351 Winter Green. So we purchased the house at $188,000 through condemnation. This house was a little bit different, it didn't have that string of nuisance violations that you typically see on a condemnation. The owner had passed away, the heirs were not interested in opening an estate, they also were not interested in conveying the house to one of them or selling it to a third party. It was also part of a program back in 1998 that the Housing Fellowship had for affordable homeownership, where they did land lease, the Housing Fellowship owned the, the land, and then the homeowner just bought the house to decrease the price of homeownership. So due to the unique ownership structure and the condition of the home, we went in and we condemned it. We did have an inspector go out, the house was infested with, had an infestation of mice, there was some hoarding, so we exterminated, we paid for, to haul the debris out, cost us about $32,000. So at this point, we, we listed the home with a realtor, it has been sanitized, debris out, exterminated, and we are now selling it to a buyer who will renovate the property and either sell it or live there themselves. So we have expenses of over about $227,000, we will probably recover about $195,000 of those expenses. Within 60 days, the buyer has to apply for a building permit, and within 18 months of closing, the improvements must be completed. So this will just be the conveyance to the buyer. And then I'm available for questions.
So did the city end up also purchasing the land? I mean, is it now altogether?
Yes, so we made three checks, one to the mortgage, one to the Housing Fellowship, and then one to the heirs.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand or press star nine for the telephone caller. In, in person, please come forth. Seeing no one online or present in council chambers, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mo, seconded by Sala, and council discussion.
Seems like the right thing to do.
Yep. Glad it was a good resolution.
Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. 11D, Highway 6 East Water Main Replacement, resolution approving the project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the Highway 6 East Water Main Replacement Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome.
Good evening, council, I'm Mari Van Dyke, I'm with the Engineering Division. So this project involves replacing about 2,100 feet of 16-inch diameter water main. The location is along the north side of Highway 6, between Fair Meadows Boulevard and Industrial Park Road, so that's shown in this dark blue line. The existing water main was installed in 1964. Since the year 2000, there have been five water main breaks, four of those happened in 2018 and 2019. And since it's such a large diameter main, when there is a water main break, it causes significant loss in pressure to the system, and it's also very disruptive to the services for the industries in the area. So construction would be largely in the, kind of the ditch alongside of the highway, so there'll be minimal impacts to traffic. The two locations where we will have impacts to traffic are on each end of the project, so the contractor will work from east to west, so first will be Industrial Park Road. Industrial Park Road is a dead-end street, so when they cut across with the water main, they're going to phase the work so that they're maintaining two lanes of traffic at all times, so that we can keep access to those businesses. On the west end, when they cut across Fair Meadows Boulevard, we're going to completely close Fair Meadows at the intersection with Highway 6, so that they can do it all in one shot. And while that closure is in place, they'll, we'll have the detour route posted, it's shown here in orange, and so that will use Highway 6, South First Avenue, and Lower Muscatine Road, and that closure should only last a few weeks. For schedule, the bid opening is March 12th, we would award the contract March 19th, and then we construct the project between April and September this year. Estimated construction cost is $880,000, and that's the summary, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So in some parts of town, I know that we do bikeways on top of public easements for sewers and, and water mains, but this one seems to be reversed, like, water is in the north of Highway 6, but the bike is in the south, is, is there a, a reason for that? Is that a different?
You mean, if the water main and the trail were opposite sides?
On top of one, or, well, aren't they, I always thought they sometimes are on top of each other, is that not best practice anymore, or?
I guess I'm not sure if there's a reason for that.
Highway 1 and 6 were, you know, were not constructed with any pedestrian facilities, we spent quite a bit of money and effort, and we are still spending quite a bit of money and effort putting in those pedestrian facilities, so the water infrastructure, all the utilities certainly predate any of the significant pedestrian, pedestrian ways. We're focused right now on the south side of Highway 6, trying to build out that, that pedestrian network, but, yeah, I think it's just historically that that, that was not prioritized when Highway 1 and 6 were, were constructed.
And there's no part of this project that would add any pedestrian, okay?
Just a question relating to the detour. There's a bus on a bus stop on that detour route, and then typically they cross over there, do we know what that detour might look like?
I think they would likely close that specific bus stop and direct passengers to, I think there's one farther up, more close to First Avenue, but I could discuss that with transit to.
That'd be great, because that's the Eastdale stop, I think, so it'd be good to make sure people have a place to go. Thank you.
And making sure that there's signage.
Yeah.
All right, no other questions, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, caller, you would have to star nine to be heard. Seeing no one in person or online, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Burgess? Second, Sala.
All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Item 11E, Amendment Number One to Highway Commercial Urban Revitalization Plan, resolution approving amendment number one to the Highway Commercial Urban Revitalization Plan. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
Second, Alter.
Moved by Sala, seconded by Alter, and going to welcome our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So briefly on this one, Iowa code allows businesses to seek prior approval from council before their projects are constructed as part of this program, so as to ensure that, you know, that they don't have the chance of being rejected after the fact, after money has been spent and the improvements have been built. But it does not require that. Our current urban revitalization plan does But it does not require that. Our current urban revitalization plan does require that, and we think that that should change, that we should match the state language of May. And so that's what this amendment achieves. It retains councils, the requirement for council to approve the work after the improvements have been built, for them to get the partial tax exemption. So nothing about this changes when it comes to council by necessity and whether you, or whether you approve of the work that's been done.
So do then preapprovals need to have conditions attached to them so that the applicant understands what they'll be judged against later?
Well, it's, whether, it's not, it's not like the kind of discussion we just had with HPC or something, or even something about building code or something. Of course, they need to comply with all those standards and so forth. It's just whether it fits in the planned, whether it is in fact the commercial, highway commercial kind of property. And so there's not a whole lot to it, frankly.
Any other questions for Eric? Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, press star nine to be heard. Say no one in person or online. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 11F, Tax Abatement Application, Highway 6. Resolution approving eligibility for a tax exemption on an improvement project on commercial property located at 947 Highway 6 East, Iowa City, Iowa pursuant to the Highway Commercial Urban Revitalization Plan. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Moved. Mo?
Second. Sala?
All right, and welcome back, Rachel.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Kilburg-Varely, Economic Development Coordinator. So for some of you, this, you have, a project within this program hasn't come before you, so I'll give a little bit of background. But as Eric mentioned, the Highway Commercial Urban Revitalization area allows for tax abatement on the improvement value of commercial property if that improvement adds at least 15% in new taxable value on the building property. So either a new building where there was not one before, or new value on top of an existing building, but not the land or equipment or other forms of property. So this area was originally established, I believe in 2019, to help incentivize improvements on a lot of the older commercial properties that are in this corridor. There are not projects which would necessarily be TIF eligible, and there haven't been incentives to spur this kind of revitalization in the past. So the application before you this evening is for 947 Highway 6 East, which is the new self-storage facility and South District Market located in the Pepperwood Plaza. So the project renovated a former slumber land. It was about 40,000 square foot total that was renovated between the two new uses, and the property owner invested about $3 million in the project. So with your approval, the property will receive 100% tax abatement, again, only on that new value added, and all subject to the city assessor confirming that, yes, 15% value increase has occurred, and it is an eligible property. So they'll still pay property taxes on the land during those three years, but then after the three years with the tax exemption, they'll pay their full property tax bill.
You're saying like three years of tax exemption? And can you explain again why?
Why they'll be receiving the tax exemption? So it's a, it's a, within, it's a program that was established within the state code and which we've adopted here locally. And again, it's to incentivize investment in commercial, older commercial buildings in the Highway 1 and 6 corridor, which maybe need that incentive to help spur some revitalization. So by encouraging property owners to invest in their property and make improvements that will add value, then we'll offer that three-year tax exemption on the new value they've added.
Is it, so this is a completed project. Is it typical for this application to come after the project is complete? Or I feel like frequently we're presented these opportunities in the development phase, not after the fact. What's unique about this one? What?
Even though, sorry, I'm like, no, go ahead. I'm just going to talk. But no, I mean, if it's on Highway 1 and Highway 6, then the, these are, it's for urban revitalization, right? And so these are buildings that already exist.
Sure. I guess what I'm saying is I would have expected to see this come to us before the developer made the investments in the building, but I also am just...
If we hadn't just amended the plan to not require preapproval, would this be in front of us?
This would be a problem if we hadn't just made that amendment. The chronology of these two items was deliberate.
Okay. So.
How much taxable value are we talking about? Because it's not mentioned in any of the documents how much they actually included. It just mentions that they spent $3 million on the project.
Yeah, I don't have an estimate on what that would be, so the city assessor will conduct their assessments and apply the exemption.
Hey, we should have asked Brad when he was here a few hours ago.
That kind of bothers me, like, that we're...
We'll be able to deliberate. We can continue to ask more questions.
Apologies.
Maybe I can provide some historical context before Rachel was in her current position. So just an understanding of why this tax abatement area was created. In the years leading up to 2019, there was a lot of conversation on council about wanting to support businesses outside of the traditional big TIFs that got all the attention, right? We had just gone through a series of tax increment financing projects downtown with the Chauncey, with the Hilton Garden Inn, with the Edge, and there was conversation in the community, well, what are we doing for some of the smaller businesses in some of the older areas? And we prioritized the Highway 1, Highway 6 area as an area that could use some incentive. But unlike a TIF deal, which would take years to negotiate on an individual basis, we wanted a solution that provided clear, clear guidelines that someone could navigate from start to finish fairly easily. It wasn't a situation in which we wanted to evaluate the merits of every project. We were simply looking at economic development incentives along this corridor. So we used this tool, which the state allows, an abatement program, which we historically have not used much in Iowa City. Other cities throughout Iowa use this very, very much. We were, we are definitely on the low end of kind of utilization when it comes to tax abatement in Iowa. So we created this program at that time, again, to spur this redevelopment and help businesses of kind of all sizes along the corridor. It's a short tax abatement window, only that three-year period, and it is, as Rachel mentioned, only on the new value. So we're not abating previous taxes that were historically, historically paid. In the situation that's before you tonight with this project that's already completed, it is a little bit different that this is coming to you. Frankly, we gave the applicant some bad information back in 2019 as we were creating this program. We relied on the state code and said, you can submit this. You need to, you need to apply. We actually advised, you need to apply after you're done. And we were really looking at when that application has to go to the city assessor. That was bad information. According to our plan, they should have presented that at the time. And that's what the previous councils have seen, is that typically these applications will come to you prior to, prior to the construction taking place. Again, you're not really reviewing the individual merits of each project. You're simply looking for whether it complies with the plan that has been created, which is, which is pretty, pretty broad. So we are in a situation in which we gave the applicant poor advice. The applicant was, had communicated with staff prior to construction, but due to bad information we provided, we told them to hold off on the application until they're done, again, relying on some of the state language as opposed to our local language.
I guess when I ask you, you're saying like for the new value that added, which one? I feel like they changed everything, like on the building, they made it like...
Yeah. So I'll just use, these are fictitious numbers, but if the value of that building, including the South District Market and the store local, the storage, if that was a million-dollar property after, you know, in its vacant status, when Slumberland left, and now it's worth $2 million, the tax abatement is only on the $1 million growth for that three-year period. They're going to continue to pay all the taxes on the million, and then for three years, they'll get the abatement on the new growth. And then after three years, the entire value hits the tax rolls. Those, again, are fictitious numbers, but just to illustrate how the program works.
And you don't know what, how, what's the value now?
No, I think they'll apply to the assessor this year, and that tax abatement will be for valuation that's determined probably this year. I think it's this year's valuation, so the assessor's probably still making those valuation determinations at this time.
And since we are like about maybe to approve this after the fact, as they already built, if another person come with the same situation, are we going to do the same thing? Like, for example, somebody forget to apply. He doesn't know about this, like, maybe doesn't know about these programs or anything. They did, they built something. Can they, is this going to be a regular thing we can do, like for everyone else?
It would depend if the improvement was after the plan was created, after the, after the program was created.
Yes, that's what I mean.
And does it have to be geographically located on that corridor?
On the Highway 6, yeah.
I guess, do we, you know, with a TIF project, which you described as more complicated, there would be like an if-but-for analysis, because they need the TIF to make the project happen. Is there any kind of basis for decision-making for these projects, or is it just anybody who wants one gets one? Or, I mean, I really...
It is really a very rudimentary economic development tool. We are trying to create value, long-term value growth and incentivize that redevelopment. So no, there's not, there is really not case-by-case evaluation short of they have to meet that 15% standard.
I clearly want development in that part of town. Like, it's not, like, that's not the question. The question is, do we have any rules around this? Are we just, how are we going to say no to somebody that we really don't think is...
Well, yeah, I think the premise of it is that but for this incentive, maybe that added value wouldn't have happened, and we're good with that or we're not. But we just, so Jeff, I want to just ask about this bad information that we may have given to the owner there. I don't know if you know this, but if you know, would they have then, was your understanding that they believed that they would be getting this tax abatement over a three-year period?
Yes. They had clearly established conversation with us, you know, this property also required a rezoning, and so...
I remember that.
As they were contemplating this project, the tax abatement was a factor in their decision. I couldn't tell you if it was the deciding factor and whether to move forward or not, but this isn't something that they reached out to us about midway through construction. They had done their work and asked the city for guidance prior to starting construction, and we just provided bad information at the time.
So kind of have, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to know, because they, did they understand that this could still come to council for a yes or no vote?
Well, I mean, either way, the, whether it was preapproval or postapproval, approval was going to be required either way.
I mean, were they aware that it was at the discretion of council?
Yes, they were aware that an application to council was required.
And that council could say yes or no?
Based on the plan criteria, yes.
Okay.
Because I feel like, I'm, with, I have the same question, because I feel like when you said they have the assumption that this will be, like, as if it's guaranteed, like, kind of, the way that you did it.
The way the program is set up is, is pretty close to a guarantee, right? If you meet this, these very basic criteria, which largely is the property valuation growth, then you will receive the three-year abatement. It doesn't get into what type of use are you providing? Does that use align with the city's strategic plan? Again, it is a blunt tool to help incentivize new development in the, in the Highway 1, Highway 6 area. So we've had a variety of businesses. I believe the Car Wash in the Pepperwood Plaza qualified for this. We've had some out in the, on the Highway 1 side around the Menards area qualify for this as well. It doesn't, it doesn't really get into project-by-project evaluation.
A question for Eric. Is it appropriate for us to consider the, like, if we, this project we know more about because of the rezoning and that kind of thing? Is it appropriate for us to consider that?
I'm sorry. Is it appropriate for you to consider that you know more about the project?
Well, so Jeff was just saying, like, we don't really do it on a case-by-case basis. But if we happen to know, can we consider the merits, or are we not supposed to?
You're not supposed to, no.
Thank you.
I mean, this is kind of laid out by statute. It's largely black and white, yes or no, binary. Yeah. I mean, unlike TIF, where, you know, there's all kinds of things you folks can negotiate, or even planning and zoning. Sometimes if it's affected by, you know, the increase in zoning, then we can work through those kind of changes or requirements that are made as a result of the plan development and so forth. But here, no, either you qualify or don't. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
This means like, this is a, I understand what you're saying. If it is TIF, yeah, we can say whatever we want, because we giving out money for that or break for that. But is this like something, can we say, oh, for somebody to apply for it before they build the building, can we also say, oh, can we have this happening there, or?
No, that would be, if you're talking about, could you add conditions? No.
Okay.
Yeah, if you really wanted to get into that, I mean, we would, it would be just a complete shift in economic development tools that we would use. We would probably terminate the tax abatement district and put in an urban renewal district, which would allow for the use of tax increment financing. Unfortunately, tax increment financing is going to be a tool of limited benefit to your very small businesses, right? It's not going to, it's not going to probably address most of the needs up and down this corridor.
All right. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please press star nine and start speaking. If you're present, please come forth. Say no one online or in person. Council discussion.
So I plan on supporting this for a variety of reasons. I think the misunderstanding at first is kind of a pretty big deal if we were to say no. It's kind of like a bait and switch, and I think that that would just be horrifyingly damaging for our relationship with developers and, you know, the broader business community. But there is something that kind of bothers me, and it's, and I would like to hear an answer on this if I can. Can you help me feel more comfortable with this without knowing what the new assessed value is on this? Like, how do we, if, you know what I mean?
Well, what I was going to say is that the property owner, should council approve, will still need to turn in their application, actually, I think they already have, to the city assessor, and the first thing that he will look at is the present value to make sure that it has increased at least 15%. I don't know if that's addressing the concern that you're...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if, if they don't qualify, if they haven't added 15% of value, then they don't get it. That's it.
So I guess the thing that kind of bothers me is that we're saying that they qualify with this. And so that's where, like, the kind of disconnect is?
Yeah. We know through conversation with the assessor's office that the improvements made are, they feel pretty confident that they're going to trigger the 15%.
Cool. Okay.
But as Eric mentioned, if we do get applications, say, in a pre-construction state, let's say there's an existing building, they're going to do a small addition to it, you can still, they can still apply, you could still approve it, and then that final check is the Iowa City Assessor's Office, where they're going to see, okay, we, the city council has approved this. Unfortunately, your value only increased 10%. I'm sorry, you don't, you don't meet the standards, and you're not going to get the benefits.
Cool. Thank you.
So I, I agree. This feels like a bait and switch to change now if they believe they're going to get it, and I will be supporting this, but I am still concerned about the idea that we don't have rules in place. Like, let's say somebody wants to make a vape superstore down there. Are we going to give an abatement for that? Like, shouldn't we have, I mean, sorry to, are we just going to make decisions as they come? Like, shouldn't we have, I mean, sorry to, are we just going to make decisions as they come?
Again, I think you're just going to have to think about, if that risk is so concerning, then we probably just need to reevaluate the entire program. And unfortunately, this is just one of those tools that is very general in nature, right? And you're going to, you know, a lot of you may not have said, oh, boy, let's go incentivize a car wash. But this again is value creation. And I think the bigger picture thinking on this is that as that value creates, you have then more discretionary resources to fund your core services, to fund all the things that you want to as a city. And it's not really looking at the merits of the entity creating the value. So a vape superstore should, could qualify. I hope we don't go down that path like you do, but maybe we already have a number of vape shops. But yeah, it's just, it's an imperfect tool. It's a very, very broad tool.
And yet, like you said, it hasn't been used all that much, correct? Just ballpark?
Correct. We used to have one, I think even before my time, there was an abatement district in the downtown, I believe. I don't know if you recall that. I think there was a limited time period where we did this in the downtown. And then for 10-plus years, it wasn't used at all really by the city to anything that I can recall. And setting up the Highway 1, Highway 6 was a huge lift for economic development here in Iowa City. It required a significant amount of work and probably a couple of years' worth of effort to get that area established.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments by council?
I guess I remember when we was talking, I was in the council when we was talking about the Slumberland space and everything, and they're going to provide really, like, a space for the community to do their business. Even though I was very disappointed by the small space that they create, but I still going to vote for this.
All right, roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is council appointments. So councilors, we have three different, four different commissions that we're going to be appointing for. I want to, we're going to start with the Charter Review Commission. And I'll just, I think we all know how I'm going to do that process. I'm going to ask our city attorney just to give us some information on some conflict issues.
Thank you, Mayor. So wanted to discuss conflict issues on this one are a little trickier than they would otherwise be. Normally, council finds itself filling one position. And if a councillor has a conflict, that council member recuses themselves from that discussion. Here, we have at least nine positions. And of course, it would be inappropriate for a council member who has a conflict with one person to be excluded from the conversation for all nine positions. So we've worked through that, and this is what we came up with to resolve the conflict issues that were raised. One of the applicants is Matt Hayek. He is a law partner for councillor Burgess. She raised that issue and has agreed that she has a legal conflict. As a result, what she'll do is she will remain present for the discussion for the other eight, if you will, positions, but will not take part in any discussions regarding Mr. Hayek, nor take part in any votes regarding him, if any shall come. The other potential conflict was raised and resolved regarding one of the other applicants, Riley Einon Lynch, due to his provision of free office space to the nonprofit, as I understand it, to the nonprofit over which Mayor Protem Saleh serves as volunteer interim director. But because there is no financial benefit, either direct or indirect, to the Mayor Protem, and because she is asserting that she can remain fair and impartial with respect to his application, we've agreed there is no legal conflict, and so she will be present as a full participant. There were some other questions that were raised about some of the applicants, less individually based, but more about groups in which they're a part. One is elected officials. The qualifications for board and commission assignments are contained in the council's rules, Rule 36, to be specific. And there are a number of things that prevent a person from being appointed, most notably, a family member of a council member can't serve. There are some others as well. But of those that apply here, there's nothing that would prevent an elected official, and I mean, an elected official other than you, elected for some other governmental body to serve.
I like how you looked at me, Eric.
I looked at you? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Another question was raised about employees, and here I mean employees of the city. This is a little trickier. It has been our longstanding advice from the city attorney's office that certainly no employee should be appointed to a board or commission that would have any influence over their work. Well, here, it's the Charter Review Commission, which, you know, is the broad, kind of overhanging everything we do. But it's a little diffuse because it's kind of the constitution, if you will, of the city. So ultimately, we came down that it's probably okay. Frankly, you know, we never recommend an employee be appointed for the reasons that I mentioned, and because they often end up having to recuse themselves if anything ever does stray into their area of work. And again, here, you know, because it's a charter commission, it could essentially apply to everything, depending on what kind of issues are raised. So I think they are technically allowed, but would probably like, or probably have to recuse themselves now and then. And for that reason, we recommend that you not appoint a city employee. There is other question about other commissioners. Your rules normally say that you cannot serve on more than one board or commission, but the rule says unless it's specifically allowed under that board or commission. And the resolution that you folks passed to form the Charter Review Commission did specifically allow for dual board or commission service. So you may consider applicants who are already serving on a city board or commission. Gender balance, again, like, we often say, this is a board, the Charter Review Commission is a board that's not required by state government. And as a result, the gender balance law technically does not apply, but it has been the longstanding custom of the city council to apply that gender balance standard to all boards and commissions, even if they are not required to do so by state law. Finally, there was a question about whether council selects the chair of the commission. As council is probably aware, most boards and commissions elect their own. Here, again, the resolution spoke to this issue, and it said this, council may select the chair. Obviously, that's different than shall, but if council wishes to select a chair, you may. If you don't, that's fine as well, they'll select their own chair. Those are the issues that had been identified to me in advance, but I'm happy to answer any other kind of procedural questions, if you have any.
Just kind of one, and this is just a detail. Many times in the past, we have voted on a commission sort of for the whole slate. And if, as we get to that point, and hypothetically, Mr. Hayek is on that slate, do we need to pull him out separately?
You're exactly right. What would happen if you come to a consensus that on a slate of nine candidates, if you ultimately choose nine, and he is one of them, you would vote on eight, and councillor Burgess would be part of that vote, and obviously excluding him. And then she would recuse for the last vote, and then council would vote on his candidacy.
Sure, thank you, just curious.
Yep.
I apologize for doing this now. It just occurred to me as you were running through these. What if there's a potential conflict among applicants?
I'm not sure I follow, I'm sorry.
Like a landlord and lessee?
I'm not sure that would constitute, unless I'm missing something of the facts. I'm not sure that would constitute any kind of legal conflict unless you mean that they just don't get along or something like that. But unless your feeling is that the tenant in this hypothetical situation would feel that they are, I don't know, that they have to follow what their landlord says, otherwise the landlord would retaliate against them or something? Is that kind of what you're envisioning?
I guess, I just, that or more broadly in terms of, you know, when we have to go through compliance, the optics of, you know, does there seem, does there appear to be a disproportionality of power imbalance or something like that?
Yeah, well, you're asking...
I'm sure it has to do much more with just the individual relationship, and I don't think that there's an issue, but...
Well, you're asking the right questions about power imbalance and so forth, although since these folks would be equals on the board...
Right, it's one vote.
In commission, they all have one vote. But I mean, but I hear you, if one had power, or, you know, one was, let's say, the supervisor of the other in a workplace, that would maybe be an easier case where there maybe really would be a conflict, you know? Let's say the supervisor in that case wants to do A, and now the, you know, employee feels like, I didn't really like A, but now I got to do A because my boss says A, then, yeah, that would be a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Eric before we continue? All right, so I'm going to just open up the floor and ask for people to submit names of those that they want to kind of elevate forward. And if you hear a name of someone that has been mentioned, just kind of make a mark somewhere so that you can come back around when I ask for, of the names that's been submitted, is there someone else that want to offer further support? So at this time, I will take names.
Jennifer Patel?
Yes, like, anyone can jump in?
Yes.
Okay, Riley Hens?
John Ballmer?
John Dees?
Susan Craig?
No, no.
Ballmer?
Bijou Marabo?
Sorry, can you repeat?
Bijou Marabo?
Rod Sullivan?
Andre Wright?
Mackenzie Droux?
Polly Horton?
David Sterling?
Matt Hayek? Can we slow down just one second so I can keep track here? Who was after Mackenzie?
Polly Horton.
Polly, and who was, who said Polly?
Me.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm just trying to keep track so I know who done. Who's after Polly?
Molly Cussera, oh, sorry, I'll hold off.
I said Hayek and then Cussera, yeah. Said Matt Hayek.
And then I said Molly Cussera.
Jim Throgmorton?
Jereen Denning?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that.
Brandon Flanser?
I had Diane Duncan Goldsmith?
Carrie Lane?
Rick Dobbins?
I have 15 listed unless I miss some.
I have 18.
18?
I have 18.
You have 18? I missed a couple, too. And then I missed some, so I'm sorry.
Did we get Susan Craig? I said her early, Susan Craig?
Yeah, that would be 19. And that's okay. No, that's okay, we'll go through and see where there is support. And again, you know, even if we get to a point where there's a, you know, like, nine selected, we still have opportunity to either revamp what's already been selected or go up to 11. So, or someone withdraws support because there's another candidate that they wanted to support. So, yeah, all right. Any other? All right, of the individuals that have been named, is there someone that they, you know, want to support an additional? Is there anyone?
Someone more?
No, 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 no. Within this list, if there's a name that's been mentioned and you want to throw your support behind that individual, this is where we're going to go kind of one by one with anyone that want to additionally support someone.
So you want to run through the list of names then, Mr. Mayor?
No, I just want people to mention who they want to support. So if you heard a name and it wasn't the one, even if you were the one, just mention. Actually, I would prefer if you wasn't the one, that...
I'm sorry, you're going to have to start.
All right, all right, all right, listen.
So could we just go councillor to councillor and we just say the names that we support? And then you tally?
Do you all, do you all have?
I can do that.
Could we do that?
Yeah, I have a list. I think as a first pass, and then we'll kind of see where we shake out at that point, and then we can do another pass after that.
Do we want a tier of votes or just as many as you want? You said you're, we're just listing however many names?
What if we have more than nine?
I mean, I mean, that's totally, that's totally possible, right?
Can we just say the name and like one of those name that we just listed, and we see if somebody support that name?
Yeah. Like the nod of approval, like we do with all commissions?
Yes.
If we're inclined to support.
Okay, so you all want me to read the names?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go with Jennifer Patel, I believe was the first name.
I support that.
Yes.
It's four, yeah. So I want to be sure that I at least get...
A number?
Yes, a number.
So, keep our hands up until you counted?
Yes. And I'll, yep, I see five. And the next one is Riley.
I support that.
So two, three. So I see three. John Ballmer. I see three. John Dees.
I support that.
I see seven. Bijou. I see seven. Rod Sullivan. I see one. Andre Wright. I see five. Mackenzie. I see four. David Sterling. I see two. Polly Horton. I see two. Molly Cussera. I see three, four, five, okay. Matt Hayek. I see two. Jim Throgmorton. I see one. Jereen, is that how we pronounce that?
That is correct.
Okay, I see four. Brandon. I see one, two. Diane. I see one.
Duncan Goldsmith?
Oh, sorry, yep. Yeah, I think if you keep raising your left, your right hand kind of confuses me. Thank you.
I wrote down last names and you're saying first names, so I'm just having to double check.
Yes, yes, all right. Rick Dobbins. I see three. Susan Craig. I see three. All right.
You had Lane, I believe? Carrie Lane?
Carrie Lane, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I missed Carrie Lane. Oh.
Yeah, you'll have it, Carrie Lane.
So I must have, how many did Diane have?
Two.
Two.
Two. Okay. That's where I went wrong. All right, Carrie Lane. Three, okay. And then Rick Dobbins, once again. Three, wait. Oh, so we have four. And then Susan Craig. Three, okay, all right. So what? Yes, yep, so, yeah, so the first round over four is going to be Jennifer. I'm going to do first names, if that's okay for now. Jennifer?
You mean four or above or over four? You mean four or above, or over four?
Over four.
Four or above.
Yeah.
John Deeth.
John Dees.
Bijou.
Bijou.
Andre. Mackenzie. Molly. And is it Jereen?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah. And Rick.
And was Rick four?
Rick had three, I think.
Rick had four.
I... You're gonna hate me?
Okay.
No, because I didn't realize Rick, and then Susan, that Susan was after, so I thought Rick was the last person, and I was like, eh, it's all right, but I would prefer to take my vote away.
Yeah, so Rick is at three?
Okay.
And so how many?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven.
So there are seven names that have been elevated?
But I would like to put my name towards Susan.
So, okay, so I want to see how many people raised their hand for Susan Craig one more time? So Susan has four now, so we're gonna move Susan over. So now we have eight individuals. All right.
I have nine listed.
We've got four or more.
Yeah, I have nine listed that have four or more.
You, you state you have nine individuals, so... I'll go ahead and read again.
Jennifer, John Dees, Bijou, Andrew, Mackenzie, Molly, Jereen, Susan.
I didn't keep up with that, I have them in alphabetical order, sorry.
That's what I have as well.
Yep, that's, that's my list.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we're short one.
For the minimum.
For nine, that's correct, sorry.
If we were to go with nine, we're short one, yep.
Oh, Patel.
So is there someone? Maybe what I'll do is I'll read off the names that have three?
Sure.
And then, I'm gonna read all the names, and then people can determine what they want to do. I am gonna do it slowly. So Riley. John. Carrie. And Rick.
Were you reading off the names to vote, or just so we knew which the names were?
So we knew what they were.
Just so that people, yeah, just so that people knew where names were. I mean, I will say that personally, I didn't have like this final list, so I think I only raised my hand about four or five times. Not to say that I'm the one to make a, make a difference, but if anyone has anyone that they would want to support, certainly they can share it at this time, but I would throw my support behind Carrie Lane.
I would agree with that very strongly.
That's the ranked choice voter applicant?
It's a lot more than that, I mean, I've, I've spoken with Carrie about it at length. Carrie ultimately is just someone who wants to move the community forward, and he's spent a lot of time working on ranked choice stuff.
Sure.
And the other, because again, I didn't, you know, share who I would have supported, I would have thrown my support behind John Ballmer as well.
You mean you was not supporting for the three, or I don't know what you mean?
I didn't raise my hand as we were going through.
Can you ask again to people to raise their hand for the people?
Oh, for the, for the two that I just mentioned. So John, we want to see raise of hands?
John Ballmer.
So that's four. And then for Carrie Lane, raise of hands.
I vote again, or was I, was this only for?
No, we're just going through just to confirm how many votes were there. So Carrie Lane.
I'm just looking, Mayor, to see how many of them are male and identify as male and female.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to contend with that in a second, too.
I count five female.
Right, I think I had five. Right, I think we've got eight at the moment, I think I have five of them as identifying as women. Please correct me if, if anyone counts differently. You've?
I think there are six, there are six.
Six?
Yeah. Yep, Craig, Denning, Daru, Maliabo, Cussera, Patel.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Carrie.
So we still haven't decided between Ballmer and Carrie.
So it does look like, because people can change their votes as well, looks like Carrie had three hands that were just raised.
Can we get the vote counts for the people that had two?
Yeah, absolutely. So before we move on, so John Ballmer has four. So we'll just add him to the list, and again, we may, you know, have to come back and remove somebody from the list.
Okay.
All right, so the individuals that had two is David Sterling, Polly, Matt Hayek, Brandon, Diane.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I did raise my hand for, for Rod, and I don't think it got counted, I think I might have been slow on the draw.
Okay, yep. So and Rod Sullivan.
Yeah, can we? Oh.
And, and just so that we kind of keep count of the male, female balance, if we can...
One, Jennifer, Susan.
Two.
That's six.
So it looks like we have three males, and then?
And one, two, three, four, five.
Six.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
And six female.
Six females.
Okay.
Can we go through the people again, they have three, and see if we have, somebody can change their vote, or add more?
So then...
Would it be, so I, I think it might be valuable to just go through, maybe eliminate the ones, the people that only had ones, if, if there's consensus for that, and then just go through the names that are three and below again, to see how that sorts out?
Okay.
If that would be valuable.
So...
Threes and blows, yeah.
So...
Yeah, threes and twos, yeah.
Threes and twos.
Threes and twos.
Are we wanting to, because we have?
Six female.
We have six female, do we just want to go through the male names at this point?
Sure.
Okay. All right, and you are suggesting that we go through the ones that have two and a...
Two's and threes.
Two's and threes, okay? All right, so the ones that have twos and threes?
Are we just picking one right now? Are we saying who our top person would be?
I guess the question is, are we, are we increasing to 11, or are we gonna swap one of the, drop one of the females and, and add a male to make it to?
I think if we can come up with our male individual now, and then after that, we can take up that...
The second part of that question, okay?
Yeah, okay.
One thing at a time.
Sure, sure, sure.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So two and three, so we have Riley, we have Rod Sullivan, we have David. Oh, sorry, I'll go again, we have Riley.
Rod.
Rod. David. Matt.
Can you say what the number, while you're saying that, about three, Rod?
We'll probably go through and recount. Brandon. And Rick.
I think a vote would be good, just to see where people are at.
So then...
She's female. Yes.
All right, so we'll go with Riley first, and I'll just look at hands.
I really think...
We have three.
But can we talk, you know, about this, so maybe we can convince some people? I just feel like really Riley's really engaging the community, he, he really connecting with different kind of community, trying to bring people together. So consistently, he have conversation with the community through the program, that he have like bringing neighborhood together. And I think this way, he will be engaging with like maybe kind of the whole city. And I, I believe he also bringing really strong skill and background, and data analyst and everything, and I thinks he really will be great at this commission, and I hope one of you will support it.
Great. We'll go to the next name, which is Rod. And any, so we have three for Rod? Yeah? And, okay?
I guess it's, so here's, I mean, since Mayor Protem started the thing, and we're getting down to sort of brass tacks, I mean, I do believe that Rod Sullivan would be a tremendous asset on this, however, I am concerned about the fact that he is a current elected official, and that he's running for election. The, the reasons why he has not been selected, as he noted, that he has not in the past, is because he has been an elected official for a very long time, so I feel like there's a, perhaps an, a potential of opening up a door for precedent, that he is tremendous, but is this a kind of precedent that we want to set? Granted, other, other councils may decide something totally different, but I guess I just wanted to put that out there to say that while I think that he is, would be a tremendous asset for this, but for the fact that he is an elected official, so.
Just to, friendly dialogue on that, we have already appointed county supervisors to commissions for the city, and, and I understand that the situations are, are very different. And I, and I think it's important to understand as well that it is different, this is about form of government, and, and there are very few people in this community, we're very fortunate to have people on this list who have as much experience working with form of government as Rod does. And so I, I totally understand, and I appreciate, you know, what you have to say and the concern there, and quite frankly, I, I had that concern too at first, but I don't really want to waste the opportunity, just me personally, like I, I think that there's a great opportunity for results for our community with his candidacy, and that's why I, I support him, you know? Totally understand where you're at coming from.
I just remember how, well, I, I think having... But I'm like, I've... I, I would just take, you know, Rod as a person out of this, and look at the power dynamics that we were talking about earlier, and the idea of like having a person who is in the, in that top role at the county, talking about, you know, informing the form of government for the city, when we do sometimes, you know, we collaborate well, but we sometimes compete, and we sometimes have very different ideas about what's right for our community, and I just don't think that that's appropriate to vest that level of power in someone who's already holding that power elsewhere. And even just if we back it up even further, and just say the consolidation of that much power in one person, I'm not comfortable with.
We're gonna move on to David. And want to see hands for David. See one. We're gonna move on to Matt. Let's see, hands for Matt. I see three. We're gonna move on to Jim, and, and, sorry, just to, not Jim, I just wanted to make a point that Councilor Burgess is recusing herself from any time Matt name comes up, so, all right. We're gonna move on to Brandon. Two. We're gonna move on to Rick.
Are we voting altogether, or, I mean, like more than once, or just our one?
Oh, no, you can, like if there was two people that came up with four, then we'll have to discuss it. So looking at Rick, so we see four for Rick. Okay? So of this exercise, we have Rick that's been moved up with a vote of four. So the, the question that I think is before us is, we have seven females right now, we have...
Six men.
We have six female?
And four.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we have one extra, yep. So we have six females, and we have four males, okay? We're gonna read off the names of the six females that we have, and then we'll have to determine if we want to go to 11. If we go to 11, then we, we would have to have at least five males, so we would have to do one more male.
Can I actually be radical here? We've looked at the, we were given the history, the list of the previous commissions, and in them, there was at most two women. Do we really need to make this five, four, or six, whatever? I mean, we have six women.
Do we have to make it an even number, is that what you're asking for?
That is precisely my question. Well, I know we need to be odd, but we, we added, we added Rick in order to get to our gen, closer to our gender, right? And now we're thinking about, well, we do, do we do nine, which means cutting off a woman, or do we add more when we actually really didn't have more than a couple of votes, right? So I guess I'm just asking, do we have to be balanced when actually for the past three decades, it hasn't been?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I'm here for that. Thank you.
So the question is... Are we gonna be, so we would have, am I counting right, we would have 11?
Oh.
No, we're at 10 total, right?
Right, and we added one from people that didn't garner.
We had nine.
Do we not have six women and four, oh, we have four men, sorry.
We added, we added Rick when it was sort of like, well, let's go through the votes that, folks who didn't garner a majority to begin with.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the list, that was the pre, pre-gender adjustment, which would have been sans Rick.
Say that again?
I'm comfortable with the list that we had prior to our gender adjustment, so which was Jennifer Patel, John Deeth, Bijou Maliabo, Andre Wright, Mackenzie Daru, Molly Cussera, Jereen Denning, Susan Craig, and John Ballmer.
But, but, but I don't know, sometime you guys change everything, and sometime when we want it, you don't change it. I think either we have to have the power to do it now, and do it for all the commission coming forward to us later, or we don't have to do it on further route. You guys have to choose, because it's not gonna be like, oh, sometime, yes, we just feel like, there is many commission doesn't have people of color for a long time, can we put like a female there, and the required one was male?
I guess we're talking about taking away a man.
Yeah, we still, I'm talking like we cannot do that. You know, I understand that, we need like more female empower, all this, I understand what you're saying.
But isn't, in the instance of this commission, we are not bound by that, because it's not, is that correct? Am I mis, under, misremembering from when you were giving us some?
Statutory requirement.
You're correct, sorry. You're right, the state law requires gender balance in boards and commissions that are, you know, laid out by the state, this is not one. So as I mentioned earlier, you are not legally required to have gender balance for this commission, it has been a longstanding practice that the council does so anyway, do with that what you will.
Yep. So just to reiterate Mayor Protem's point, where there are other boards and commissions that we have, that we've already stated a gender balance, for example, I don't believe that the state recognizes the TRC, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, to be required by the gender balance, but we do have one.
And last time I said let us elect Lubna for it, and you guys told me, but this is a gender balance.
Right.
And I shut up. Now you're doing it for this, and I think this is unfair. We should just do, if this is a common practice, let us go with a common practice.
Was, do we have an, do we have a policy or a common practice for TRC? Do we know?
Well, I, I don't want to make it about the TRC and their gender balance, what I'm saying is that we have like, what, 20, 20? What I'm saying is that we have like, what, 20, 23 commissions or something like boards and commissions? And not all of them are bound by the gender balance. So I think, I, I love that we are, you know.
If it ends up that this is an issue, I just thought I would offer that up before we made a decision to either cut a woman that we'd already majority voted, or to look at whether we wanted to expand. So it was just to put another option on the table.
Yeah, sure.
And given that this was, I mean, I was struck in looking at who passed members of this commission were over the past three decades. And there was one or two women on each one of them. So I thought, wouldn't it be kind of something? So, but if that is not the way that.
And also, I think representation is better, is more important than adding like more women's. Last time for the TRC.
Hold on.
Can I, can I say something? And I said like last time during the TRC, I said, I wish if I can do Lubna, but the requirement is male. So I think I was trying to add representation, not like, like a woman of color. It have post, she is a woman and she was a woman of color too. And I could not do it because of the gender balance.
So one thing that I do, that I might go back and say is, Susan Craig, if I'm not mistaken, had three votes the first round. And then when we came back, had four. So would people be comfortable with us removing Susan Craig? Or would somebody be willing to withdraw their support for Susan Craig? Or will the majority of us be comfortable? I mean, she started with three and then it ended up at four.
Yeah. Did we actually go through the whole, did we revote on Carrie Lane and Riley Imanlaj? I didn't mark.
Yes, we did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we, I have that all to the left side.
How much did Carrie get?
Yes.
I have a nine-person list with Rick Dobbins in parentheses off to the side. Is that where everybody else is?
Yes.
A nine-person list that's six to three with Dobbins off to the side? And I am, I'm comfortable moving forward with that list.
Me too.
So let me make sure that I understand what's being proposed right now.
So Jennifer, Jennifer Bijou, Mackenzie, Molly.
I'm referring to, the, is, are you referring to gender balance?
Oh, I was okay with our list that had more women than men, the six to three, six men, three, excuse me, six women, three men. I was okay with that.
Okay. And you were aware of the conversation that just happened? I just wanna make sure that you were.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm not try, I just wanna make sure. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I just wanted to make, sorry if it came off that way, but I just wanted to make sure that you were following. Okay, so that's great.
If the rest of the council wants us to balance it, I will of course play along. But I'm not compelled to rearrange this nine-person list at this point.
Okay.
That's well said.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually, I haven't thought about it, like, part of me really wants to go along with that. But to Mayor Protem Salie's point, I think there is some value in that in keeping true to the gender balance ideal. I think also, I don't wanna, I don't know, I don't wanna, I don't know, it feels like for consistency's sake, I think that's, I'm sympathetic to that. But that's just, I'm just one vote, so.
I, I am also sympathetic to it. I could go either way. But I think at this point, if we are to go to 11, I wanna keep the candidates that we all have. Like, those are, like, the nine that we have locked in, like, those are the people that I want for sure. And then, so if we're gonna be doing this based off of a discussion of gender balance, that means that 10, 11, those two both need to be men. And if, like, if that's what we're gonna do, I could go either way. Like, I honestly, we'd have to put it up to a vote and that's when I would make my decision.
Just to argue against myself just a little bit. Because why not? It's, we're already here long enough. If we, if we think too about in terms of other kinds of diversity balance, just by default of this list, if we go up to 11, we will be somewhat diluting the percentage of people of color on the commission. So I can see, I can see, we're gonna be doing a trade-off at some, in some point, right? So I guess ultimately, we either have to remove, either add one male to go to 11, or remove one female to bring it back down to nine. It's kind of with a choice I've had in front of us, right?
And, you know, I will just say, I think I was one of the people that raised my hand for Susan Craig. I love Susan Craig. I think she's been a great pillar in our community. She is serving on the commission currently. And so I would be, and we can take a revote so that we can make sure that there's three or four. But I would recount my vote for Susan.
Okay.
I think we've gone around a few different places. I think Susan is an important voice, you know? And I, I'm really comfortable with that original nine at this point. I'm gonna stick to that.
Yep, so I just wanna see who wants to support Susan Craig by a raise of hands. So there are four. So maybe I wasn't a part of that, or somebody jumped in, that's okay. All right. Well, council, I think we have one or two options. We could either go to 11. And I can read through, we would have to have a male. Or we would have to take away a female. Or, I mean, can we stay at 10? That's a, you know, if a vote go up.
Are we at nine to have an odd?
Need tiebreaker.
Oh, I know, I know.
Are we at nine?
We're at nine right now.
We are, no, we are 10.
What's six?
Oh, what you're saying is, but, all right, so I think maybe we should take a vote on if people don't want the gender balance requirement, which we would take that off any future opening, should it be. We won't have a gender balance requirement for this commission.
Oh, for this commission.
For this commission. And just know, we're setting, you know, opportunity in precedent for this conversation to be happening for other commissions that are not required by the state.
And the legislative intent of the gender balance was to have more women serving. That's, I think that's important to remember. It may not be implemented that way currently, and that's not the current legislature's intent perhaps, but.
Don't get me wrong, I'm all for that. It's just a matter of if we do this, do we set the stage for the flip to happen?
All right. Yep, so I think there has been a lot of conversation about this matter. What we're gonna do is we're gonna just take a vote in whatever that vote is at getting rid of this gender balance and sticking with the current six women and three males, which would not include Rick Dobbins. Is that correct?
Do we need a motion then?
No, I just want, I just wanna see hand raised at this point.
I just wanna be sure, you're saying a condition of this slate would be that we make clear that in the future, there's not a gender balance?
Correct.
I don't think we need to do that.
Well.
I think we can just say, we're going with this slate.
We won't have a gender balance, it won't.
Right, but there wasn't gender balance in the past.
We don't need to state that in the future, we don't need one.
All right, I'll take that out.
Okay.
I'll take that out.
Because I'm comfortable with this slate, but not saying in the future.
All right, great. And I was referring to this commission, but I was just referring to this commission.
For the future.
Are you saying for this time, we don't care about gender balance, but we might do in the future or not?
It would depend on the slate, yes.
Yes, yes. It depends for who is applying.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. So for this that's before us now, I just wanna see a raise of hands for those that with the current slate, we're not gonna consider the gender balance. All right? So we have made our slate. We have determined that the individuals that will be on this commission, and I'm gonna just ask Mayor Tim, Mayor Protem to read the names of the six female and the three males.
Okay, Jennifer Bijou, Mackenzie, Molly, Jereen, Susan. And for the male, Gondis.
Oh.
Yeah, Gondis, Andrew, John Balmer, and the other one is Rick.
Rick will be removed because he came, yep, no Rick. Yep.
Okay.
Yes, all right. Do I need to put last names to those or could I?
There have been a lot of names, boy, it sure would be nice.
All right.
Would you like, since I have them written down, my last name?
Please, all right, and then.
This is gonna be in alphabetical order, because that's how it was in.
Okay, so we're gonna have, so essentially, we are, the council is receiving a motion to appoint the following individuals to the Charter Review Commission. And these individuals are.
John Balmer, Susan Craig, John Deeth, Jereen Denning, Mackenzie DeRue, Bijou Maliabo, Andre Wright, Molly Casera, and Jennifer Patel.
A move by Burgess?
Second.
Seconded by Dunn, I was looking over here. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We're gonna go on, thank you all councilors for that, and thanks to everybody that is here during this process. We're gonna move on to item 12B, Public Art Advisory Committee. This is one vacancy to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2026. And there is a gender balance requirement, which is none. There is none for this one.
Mayor, can I just add? So there's two public art positions, 12B and 12C. We only have one application.
Okay.
So it's whether you wanna do a full term or an unexpired term for this individual. If you choose to appoint.
Mr. Mayor, I think I, it's the same applicant in both, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I would go the full term, I think that's.
Yeah, agreed.
Applicant looks.
So the full term is going to be the one that I just read, 12B. And so, could I get a motion to appoint Leslie Finer?
So moved to appoint.
All right, so moved by Mo, seconded by Dunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 12C, Public Art Advisory Committee, could I have a motion to defer?
So moved.
Second, alter.
So moved by Dunn, seconded by Alter, all in favor for deferment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Do you want it deferred to, I'm sorry, Mayor, to interrupt, defer to the next meeting or to republish?
Can we say until we have an application?
Because we'll advertise until it's filled.
So the motion was defer until filled.
Well.
Need to be worded differently?
Well, I mean, it's usually like, applications are accepted until filled. But insofar as when you would like to next have this on your agenda.
So, I mean, we are gonna have it on March 19th. So we'll defer this into March 19th.
All right, thank you.
And if there are no applications.
We'll just defer again.
Keep going.
Yeah, okay, great. So 12D is Senior Center Commission. One vacancy to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2026. There is no gender balance requirement, and there are two applicants.
Betty?
I agree. I love Betty.
All right, I can support Betty as well.
Strong Betty.
Yes, all right. So could I get a motion to appoint Betty Rose to the Senior Center Commission?
So moved, Thompson.
Second, Burgess.
Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Number 13 is announcements of vacancies new. 13A, we have Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term from April 2nd, 2024, through April 3rd, 2028. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Appoint appointment through December 31st, 2025. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2029. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 26th, 2024. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Mo.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Number 14 is announcements of vacancies previous. We have the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, one vacancy for HVAC or building design professional or qualified trade representative with experience and training to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlong Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. All right, we are now at item number 15, which is City Council Information. I know we're seeing 10 o'clock. Yes, all right, so we're gonna go to number 16, reports on items from our, well, I will make one announcement. So this Friday at 6:00 PM, there is the Black History Henry Hopper Mill taking place at Terry True Blood. So wanted to make sure that the community is aware of that. Any other announcements or items for, by the council?
I'll say kudos to Mayor Teague for winning an award at the Pride Gala last Saturday.
Oh, nice.
Thank you, thank you. It was awesome, gala.
Kudos to Caitlin Clark.
Yes, huge, yes.
Huge job, huge job.
All right, item, we're at item number 16, report on items from our city staff, city manager's office.
Just, as we're giving out kudos, kudos to all of you. I hope that State of the City speech kinda made you proud. It's easy to lose track of all the accomplishments that you've helped forge. Seeing it all in a half-hour video was pretty amazing, so thank you for your service.
City Attorney?
Thank you, nothing for me, Mayor.
City Clerk?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Item number 17 is adjournment, could I get a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Mo, seconded by Burgess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.